Welcome to the eighth hearing of the committee's inquiry into the ability of local governments to fund infrastructure and services. I acknowledge the Raritjiri people of the Raritjiri nation, the traditional custodians of the lands on which we're meeting today. Pay my respects to elders past and present and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respect to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people that are joining us today. My name's Emily Saval and I'm the Chair of the Committee. Ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to the evidence they give today, however it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of the hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants. I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. Welcome to our first witnesses. Thank you so much for making time to be here and giving evidence to this inquiry today. Ask each of you, starting on my left, to state your name and position, title, and swear either the oath of the affirmation.
Good morning and thank you. So my name is Peter Veneras and whilst I'm the General Manager of Lockhart Shire Council, I'm actually here this morning as a member of the Board of REROC and a member of the REROC Executive.
And if you could swear either the oath or the affirmation, please.
I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Good morning. My name is Julie Briggs. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of the Riverina Eastern Regional Organisation of Councils. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. And would either of you like to start by making a short opening statement?
Yes, thank you. I'll do that if that's okay, Madam Chair. And I should take the opportunity first, if I may, to just convey an apology on behalf of the REROC Chair, Councillor Rick Furman. He would have preferred to be here and I'm sure in his absence he probably would have preferred another mayor or elected member to be here to support Julie as the CEO, but you know, we weren't able to arrange that in the short time. But thank you for the opportunity to appear before the committee. REROC represents eight Member Councils, namely Blan, Koolaman, Kootamundra Gunderguy, Grady Hume, Junee, my own councillor Lockhart, Tamora, and Goldenfields Water. And it's now in its 30 years of operation and collaborative effort. REROC has welcomed the revised rate peg methodology, following a review by IPART which now adopts a more customised approach, factors in population growth for those councils that are experiencing it, and relies on more relevant data. And I'm proud to say that REROC has played a very active role in participating in that review by IPART. However, the point still needs to be made, we believe, that the rate peg is supposed to be set at a level that allows councils to undertake a business-as-usual approach, meaning that it should cover the increases in day-to-day costs of operations, and we believe that has not been the case. The additional revenue generated by the rate peg is usually more often than not offset by award wage increases negotiated at an industry level, increases in fees and charges and other levies imposed by public sector agencies such as the RFS, Order General, and the New South Wales Electoral Commission, before CPI, and increases in materials, fuel, and other necessities are taken into account. As it is supposed to allow for that business-as-usual approach, the rate peg makes no provision for delivering other specific projects or community priorities, even though they may be contained in the community strategic plan which is developed in consultation with the community. If a council wants to increase its rate income by more than the rate peg, it's required to make application to IPART and undertake a comprehensive community consultation process. This appears to be a duplication of effort, as how councils are required to consult for the purposes of developing a community strategic plan, and then consult again to increase its income above the rate peg so it can actually deliver on that plan. We believe the interplay between the development of the community strategic plan and the process for applying for a special rate variation needs to be reviewed and streamlined for that reason. The rate peg also has wider implications beyond impacting on a council's ability to fund services and infrastructure and deliver on its community strategic plan. It also has implications for councils, particularly in rural and regional areas, in attracting and retaining staff, as we're often required to convey an offer that's above market to attract the staff and keep them in our areas. The rate peg doesn't factor in the ability to respond to natural disasters. It doesn't factor in providing services to disperse populations, as is often the case in rural shires. And it doesn't factor in councils often being required to respond to market failure. My own councillor Lockhart is an approved childcare provider and is currently liaising with Lockhart Central School to extend a before-and-after school care service to a long daycare service because the local operator closed down with about three weeks' notice. Another Member Councillor, Blan, has held a Medicare provider number. Junee, Koolaman, Tamora Shire councils have built medical centres. These are the sorts of roles rural shires are now expected to perform. And whilst some degree, to some degree, some may argue that the financial assistance grants from the Commonwealth, you know, are designed to address these kinds of issues, what we have found is that FAGs, whilst providing a base level of funding for councils for now over 50 years, they have decreased from 1% of Commonwealth taxation revenue in 96 to just over 0.5% today, according to the Australian Local Government Association. And to make the point, whilst FAGs have been declining as a percentage of Commonwealth revenue, the role of local government during that same time has been expanding. And on that point there, I think I'll leave it at that, Madam Chair, but thank the committee again for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Did you also have a short opening statement? No? Okay, beautiful. We'll now move to questions. I'm just looking to my colleagues to see who would like to start. Honorable Scott Farlow.
Thank you very much. You tell, and your submission explains as well quite the tale in terms of the difference between regional and rural councils and what you see in metropolitan areas. You've outlined some of those roles where council steps in as the provider of last resort. How would you like to see a demarcation between the role that rural and regional councils play when it comes to the rate peg compared to metropolitan councils, who don't have that burden that you do in rural and regional communities?
One of the things that we've argued and we've seen in the new methodology that IPART has put forward for the rate peg is a recognition, a more customised approach to the peg that recognises differences. And I think we'd like to see that extended more, to recognise those, the differences between what rural and regional councils are expected to. There's just no getting away that it's a thin market. I think in the REROC region, there's something like 2.9 people per square kilometre, and they're spread over small urban centres. There is no public transport between those small urban centres, so you can't consolidate anything. So, you know, so it's not just, you know, as Peter was saying with childcare things or, you know, it's almost everything where you end up with this sort of duplication of services. So multiple outlets for administration, multiple pools, I think, you know, Grady Hume Shire, I think, has five pools, you know, like, and nobody builds a pool to make money.
Yeah.
You know, it's just how much money are you prepared to lose on the pool? So multiple library outlets, multiple landfills, multiple, so it just goes on and on. And I think that we would, one of the things that REROC has argued for some considerable time is perhaps a finer grading around rural and regional councils that's reflected in the service provision that it has to make in what is a thin market, and a recognition that there is limited opportunity, consolidate service provision, because if you want access and equity, then you need, and there is no public transport, there's not an opportunity to provide, you know, one point of contact, one public facility, those kinds of things. So I think, but look, the steps that they've taken, that IPART have taken in granulating the rate peg more, I think is really, we really strongly support that. It's a great step in the right direction. We would argue more granulation is required to get a more effective result, but, you know, we're highly supportive of the new methodology that they've put into place. And it's certainly something that REROC's argued about for this granulation with IPART for years. So we're, yeah, very pleased to see it.
So a step in the right direction.
Oh, absolutely. No question about it.
And with respect to your submission, you outline the situation where effectively, and I think it's about $250,000 all up in terms of all of your councils, is what's left over after you take out the ESL increases and the local government election expenses when it comes to the rate peg. What would you like to see with both of those line items to effectively make sure that something that the state government effectively is in many cases mandating in terms of increases of costs is potentially taken out of that rate peg formula?
So what the new methodology does is, what used to happen was that they would take the emergency services levy and they'd spread it across all councils, when, so it sort of evened everything out. But the problem was, it was only the rural councils essentially that paid the rural fire service levy, you know, and some years, you know, the rural fire service has an income of $700 million, and 11.7% of that is paid by local government, and that 11.7% is meant by rural, primarily by rural councils. But that 11.7% was spread across every council in the state, so that left us way behind. The new methodology has proposed that what they will do is, they will work out what the contribution this more, the council has to make towards the rural fire service, and then they will pop that on the top. So, you know, if that actually happens, we talk in here about the need to ground truth. Once this rate peg, this new methodology rate peg goes through for this financial, for this next financial year, then what REROC will be doing is to ground truth to see whether or not that that's worked out. But if that happens, then it will stop impacting on the business-as-usual methodology that rate peg uses. So rate peg's supposed to allow you to keep doing whatever you were doing before, but every time the ESL goes up, it makes you less able to do what you were doing before. So if the rate peg works, the new methodology works the way it's supposed to, then the ESL shouldn't impact as significantly as it has in the past. Having said that, REROC would, has argued for some considerable time, that in relation, particularly to the RFS and its growing budget, and it's grown from in the last 10 or 15 years from something like $100 million a year to, one year, $900 million, that there should be some oversight in relation to the RFS budget, so that we know that we're getting value for money. And one of the things that IPART said in its recommendation for the new methodology was by providing councils with a separate amount that covered the contribution to the RFS, it would make the RFS more accountable because people could more clearly see how much money was going towards the service being operated.
Yeah, if I can take the opportunity to respond to those questions and add to what Julie has said. And first of all, in relation to the first one about...
Veneras, I don't know if the microphone's picking you up, just give another...
Is this...
Okay, sure. Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Now we can.
Yeah, okay. In relation to the first part of your question, you know, to me it's not just a matter of separating rural, you know, and regional city councils in a geographic sense. To me, I think we need to find a way that acknowledges, you know, the rate peg acknowledges the differences in population density, you know, more specifically, because to me, it's population density where you can find economies of scale or economies of population concentration. And I need to be careful here because I'm probably delving into some of the things we've said, you know, in our own submission as Lockhart. But, you know, often the go-to sort of solution for trying to make councils more efficient has been about, you know, larger geographic units, but really the savings are in population density. And I think that's what a rate peg needs to acknowledge in terms of making the differentiation between different types of councils. In relation to the rate peg, you know, I think the irony for me is that where it should be, you know, business-as-usual and allow a council to hold the line, if you like, from one year to the next, often, you know, the additional revenue that's generated is swallowed up by things that we can't market test or are simply imposed on us, you know.
And I think you give the example as well of the order to generals fees and the like.
Correct. Order to general, RFS, electoral commission, you know, a lot of these things are mandated. And, you know, if I can say respectfully, you know, the irony is they're often from agencies of the same level of government that's capping our income.
Now, just two last questions from me, I guess. One is you've advocated, and I'll play dead bull's advocate here a little bit as well, you've advocated for the 2% increase on top of the rate cap. If that were to, without a special rate variation, if that were to be in place, wouldn't councils just take the 2% typically on top? Wouldn't it be just 2% on top of the rate cap? Or what do you see as a way to control that essentially, or to justify that 2% increase, so to speak?
Well, we are advocating for that because, as you would know, councils are committed to doing the community strategic planning process as part of the IPR. So the rate peg is all about business-as-usual, and business-as-usual started with the rate peg and IPART in 2010. Okay? So in effect, councils are stuck with delivering whatever level of service they were had to provide in 2010. Okay? Now, on the flip side, councils are required to do community strategic plans and then to deliver on those community strategic plans, and they're judged on those. So if the rate peg only gives you business-as-usual, as per 2010, and your community wants enhanced more services, existing services, or you have to, let's say, jump in where the market's thin and it's failed, where do you fund that from? So what we're suggesting is that if you want to be able to deliver your community strategic plan and your community has asked you for enhanced and increased services, then the community should be willing to pay an extra 2%. I mean, if we go to a rate, a special rate variation to try and fund the community strategic plan, you know, then we have to go back and we have to do all of those community consultations all over again, which, you know, just duplicates effort. So we're suggesting 2%. And look, do you know, councils are held to account, they're held to account every time the voters come and hold them count. They're held to account in the supermarket, you know. They're held to account in the supermarket in small communities, you know, they're held to account in the streets. I can tell you, nobody is afraid to come up to you in the pub and complain about what you're doing. So, you know, and, you know, most councils have nine councillors and they're all over the place. I think they're constantly held to account, and I think because they're such grassroots, the operation is so grassroots, councils, in my experience, don't jump to increase the rates. You know, sometimes you've got to get councils to, you have to encourage them to increase the rates, because they're torn between knowing that, you know, the community's suffering from this year time round cost of living, you know, against what's good for the council as a whole, as a business. So, yeah, we just think there should be that discretion, and that discretion would in a, be a more efficient way of allowing councils to deliver on the community strategic plan.
Just to pick up on that, so do you think perhaps that if it was to be taken up your recommendation, that that should be upfront in a community strategic plan, so to speak, that ex-council will be applying the rate peg plus 2% in order to fund the community strategic planned obligations?
I don't see that as a problem, and it's not quite the same, but I can tell you that a few years ago, quite a few years ago, but Koolaman Shire Council wanted to introduce a FOGO waste collection, okay? And it was going to incur additional costs to the council. They ran a pilot which was super successful, and then they went to their community and said, okay, well, you all seem to want this FOGO, Kupso FOGO collection, that's food organics, garden organics collection, so a whole extra bin and everything. And so they went to the community and they said, this is what it's going to cost you extra in your rates for us to do that. And everybody said, yeah, we'll pay extra to get the extra service. So I don't think it's, you know, out of the ballpark that residents say, yeah, I want an extra service and I'm prepared to pay for it. And, you know, and I see Peter nodding, but yeah, I think you go out to do the CSP and you say to the people, we've got 2% here that we can spend, this is what 2% increase represents, because sometimes that's not a bad thing for a council to say. We've got, 2% isn't a lot of money for most of our councils. And so, you know, so we've got, we've got a spare $250,000 if we do this, so this is what we can do for you.
I think I...
Sorry, Mr. Veneras?
I was just going to say, I think, I understand the question, and it would be very easy for a council to simply take up that additional 2%. But for me, the justification is if it's in your community strategic plan and the consultation in preparing that was genuine, and the community was, you know, fully informed, I think that's the justification. And at the end of the day, councils and councilors in particular do live in that political reality.
Thank you. That's a compliment.
Dr. Madcon?
My first question was about the role of REROC and other joint organisations. I think you could speak to some of the ones you might already be doing or could be doing to secure member councils' financial issues. For example, earlier in the inquiry, you know, we heard that some regional organisation of councils were doing things like linking member councils with shared resources, like particularly skilled staff members that might give them short supply or other things like that.
Yeah, so REROC's been around for 30 years, so, you know, so looking back, there's been a lot of, a lot of resource sharing activities we've done. I was saying to Peter earlier this morning that the first thing we ever did was a retail energy contract, way back when, way back when, when the market first, was first freed up, and we saved almost a million dollars for our councils doing that. So, so over the years, we've done lots of shared staffing. We've got at the moment, you know, a, we're running projects with DQ in net zero and energy efficiency, and we've got a regional project officer for that, we've got a regional projects officer working on circular economy and waste, we're two working in circular economy at the moment. But we've had road safety officers, we've had stormwater people, we've had biodiversity people, so lots of shared resources. They've worked contaminated land, so we've done a lot of those kinds of things. We've done a lot of aggregated, what's called aggregated procurement, so we purchase bitumen emulsion, liquid alum, scrap metal collection, green waste processing, guideposts, I, you know, like lots of different things, wherever it makes sense. We've procured training for councils or we run training, we develop resource materials for councils where they have to. So we will develop policy documents that they can customise for themselves, so. And we usually do that as a professional development exercise with all the, with all of the council staff that are involved in it. In doing that, we've written the regional freight transport plan with all of our engineers, we've written a regional housing strategy, again, with all of our councils, we've prepared onsite sewage management materials that are customised for our councils, which we actually sold to other councils. We've prepared councillor induction training that we've shared with other, with other rocks and joint organisations. So we do, anything where it makes more sense for us to work together than apart, then, you know, that's where you'll find us. We do a lot of stuff in career development, trying to address the skill shortage in councils. We run a programme called Build a Bridge and Get Over It, which is designed to encourage young people to pick up a career in engineering. We've been running that for, this is our 16th this year, and we probably, we think about 35% of those kids have gone into civil engineering, so, and some of them into our councils, but some of them into transport for New South Wales. And so, and we do, and we run conferences for, as professional development activities. We run a conference in energy innovation, one in waste management, and one in spatial data, as well as workshops where, we did one in May on remote sensing technologies. So anything where there's a common interest along with our councils, and we'll often join with other joint organisations or rocks to deliver what we're doing as well if they've got an interest, so.
Thank you. Yeah, that was very comprehensive, an excellent list of examples, thank you. And my follow-up question, which I appreciate you might need to take on notice, has there been any work done to quantify that benefit to your member councils compared to if they'd tried to do all of those activities separately?
Look, the last time we did that was maybe 24, like, we used to do it a lot. When we first started out, when you were trying to justify, why bother with a rock? We did it, we used to justify everything. So, you know, with a million dollars in electricity, you know, $200,000 on bitumen emulsion, you know, those kinds of things we used to do. But of course, the more you do, say, in aggregate procurement, the less return there is, because the first return is the best return. So I, you know, I can remember the first time we sold scrap metal into the market, councils used to pay, pay for somebody to come and collect it, and then we tended it out and we got, I think we got $45 a tonne for it, and my goodness, the councils thought it was the best thing since sliced bread, because not only were they not paying, they were getting paid for it. Now we put it out and it makes a lot more money than that. But, but we don't quantify it like we used to, but we do have one, the last time we really did a comprehensive look at that was in 2014, and that document's on our REROC website called Capacity Building Through Collaboration. And we did some work with UNE back in 2007 with Brian Dollery, and they did, they did a study, and I think they worked out it was something like a 300% return on the membership fee. So, so I can provide you with both of those.
Please, thank you, that would be great.
If I can just add to what Julie has said, and speaking on behalf of one of the smaller member councils, and probably one of the smaller councils in the state, you know, we've not only been able to get the advantage of the bulk procurement sort of savings, but we've got resources now that there's no way we would have had, you know, left our own sort of devices, the net, we've got a net zero plan for the Shire, you know, we've got a contaminated land, you know, management policy, we've got resources we can take to our local schools when trying to grow our own. Those are things that we wouldn't on our own have the resources to do.
Thank you. I also wanted to pick up on the earlier line of questioning by my colleague about rural councils particularly becoming the provider of last resort for things you wouldn't typically expect councils to do. In your written submission, you specifically mentioned early childhood education, aged care and medical services, which of course are things that in metropolitan areas councils are never expected to provide. Have you got some examples in REROC councils of those activities in particular that you share with us?
Well, Peter will talk to his own proper example in Lockhart, but maybe two, two and a half years ago, Koolaman Shire Council, in Koolaman Shire, the childcare closed and there was no childcare, and council ended up stepping in and taking over the childcare centre because, and Peter will talk, the economic, the domino effect from an economic perspective when the childcare closes in a small community is significant. So Koolaman stepped in and picked up the pieces for that one. It also runs an aged care facility, a very, very strong aged care facility, but you find those in lots of places. And as Peter said earlier on, you know, they're building medical centres, quite often they're building housing for doctors. Koolaman has recently built housing for aged care workers that they've had to bring in from overseas, and then they've had to house them, so they've had to build housing for those workers as well, so that they can keep their aged care facility going. So, yeah, so they're, they're thin markets, you know, I think Grady Hume has an aged care, non-aged care, childcare in Geelong.
Yes, and family daycare.
And family daycare. So they're, yeah, the problem is the thin markets, and then I think, you know, in small communities, when you're running a small childcare, and I think this is what impacted a lot in Lockhart, is that there is a lot of paperwork now, you know, and so if you're running a really small operation, sometimes the paperwork becomes overwhelming for a person who just wanted to look after kids. And, and so we're finding that the size of the operation, the paperwork for the size of the operation... the paperwork for the size of the operation becomes so overwhelming that the operator goes, look, this is all too hard. I don't want to do it anymore and they step away. And I guess in, to a degree, councils aren't very used to paperwork and it's not as daunting for them maybe. I'm not quite sure, but it makes it just less attractive again. You haven't got a lot of kids and then you've got a lot of, um, compliance. Um, and so it's easier sometimes just to step away.
And, uh, you know, earlier in the inquiry, we heard from, um, IPART and when they were talking about the new rate peg methodology that's got three categories, sort of rural, regional, metropolitan. Um, do you think that the categories that are as broad as that take into account, you know, these particular councils where they're stepping into huge leadership roles within the community, the, the costs must surely be very different to what businesses usual looks like in even other rural councils?
Look, it's, it's like we said before, it's a step in the right direction. In our submissions to, to IPART, we actually argued for something more akin to the disability factors that you find in the Fags Grant, where councils then get an uplift for, for having to deliver or ha- having a certain disability in their community. You know, now, that was obviously a bridge too far. I mean, it was great to get, you know, the delineation that we got. But I think if we were to argue for anything, we would be arguing for, like I said, further granulation. And in our submission to IPART on the rate peg, we asked for this factoring in disabilities. And, and I don't, and I don't mean it in that sort of, they're called disability factors in the Fags, but in actual fact, they're additional responsibilities, not disabilities. Like, I think that makes it negative. I think it's wonderful that a council's prepared to step in and provide childcare. But, you know, that, that comes at a price. And Peter was only saying to me earlier this morning that to fix the problem that they've got, and he'll talk about it more, I'm sure, in his Lockhart submission, but $50,000 council's got to find to help fix this problem in Lockhart. You know, now, that's not business as usual. It's not covered by the rate peg. You know, what gives in a council like Lockhart for it to be able to fix this problem for its community? Because the first place the community came when this happened was the council. What are you gonna do to fix it? And I think that's, I think that's the biggest challenge for most councils. When the market fails in any small community, the first place they go is to the council. When there's any kind of disaster, the first place they go to say, how are you gonna fix it, is the council. You know, it's the first call to call, whether it or not, it's the primary agency. And, um, and it puts councils in a very invidious position when they're in running such tight budgets.
Yeah, so the, the very specific examples I can talk about at Lockhart, there's probably two that are very current for us. One is the childcare one. So in the town of Lockhart, we, we operate a, a before and after school care service at The Rock, government funded, and at Lockhart, however, very recently, the only, um, child, long daycare centre in the town, privately operated, closed with about three weeks' notice. Uh, so working parents were left at very short notice without childcare. And we're only a small town, but, you know, the businesses in town were also then expressing concern to us about their ability to keep their staff, you know, because if they didn't have childcare, they couldn't turn up to work. So the flow-on effects, you know, from an economic development point of view for the whole town were significant. And, which is why, you know, they all turned to the council and council found it very difficult not to be part of the solution. What we're doing at the moment, and it's only focusing on a, on an interim solution whilst, you know, to buy us time to then look for the more permanent sort of outcome. We're liaising with the Lockhart Central School, the public school in town. To their credit, they reached out to us indicating they wanted to be part of the solution as well, not only for their community, but because it was impacting on them directly, you know. Their, their teachers needed childcare. So what they, they are doing is making their library available temporarily. Temporarily meaning probably for the next 18 months, two years, whilst we find a more permanent solution. Making it available for a, a child, an interim childcare centre. But what they can't do is fund the improvements to the premises in order to make them comply with all the regulations, which is where we're stepping in. And it's going through a formal tender at the, at the moment, a tender process at the moment, but we expect the, the cost to be somewhere around $40,000 to $50,000. And council has committed to, to funding that. And hopefully, you know, along with all the other, um, regulatory compliance things we have to do, we'll have an interim solution up in a matter of months. And then we'll turn our focus to what we do for a more permanent solution. And, you know, whether it's finding existing premises to convert or a greenfield site, you know, I, I don't, that hasn't emerged yet, the longer term solution. But that's an example of what we've had to do to respond in a very quick turnaround time to address a real need in the town. And the other example that comes to mind is around housing. So traditionally, any, um, property development that's happened in Lockhart has been by the council. And because it simply hasn't been any private investment. And generally, we've developed land that we've held, you know, in our ownership for some time. And obviously, as a local council, we're not motivated by profit. We're just looking to, you know, make, you know, land available so the town can grow and we've been doing that. But with our latest developments, and we've got a, a couple on the go at the moment, the council has resolved to, unlike the past where it would simply offer all the, the blocks on the market as soon as they were available, we're now looking, holding some back in our ownership and building rental accommodation because it's just a lack of rental accommodation in the town. And we hear stories about, you know, essential workers like, you know, ambulance drivers being relocated to the town and then having to live in the caravan park or, you know, things like that. So now we're looking at holding back some of the blocks we're, we're developing simply for essential workers.
Thank you. I've got some follow-up questions, but I might save them for your mayor later today and back to my colleagues.
Thank you. Um, if I can continue with some, somewhat with this line of questioning around, you mentioned, um, Mrs. Briggs, a more granular sort of approach and perhaps a more individualised process when looking at, um, uh, the rate peg and methodology and, uh, sort of allowing for not just this business as usual. How can we assist councils, um, to better prepare for, um, you know, a more sort of planned and strategic approach, um, to spending as opposed to having to react, I suppose, to the market as the example, Mr. Van Eris, that you've given? Um, and that you're then sort of scrambling and looking to find an additional $40,000, $50,000 somewhere in, you know, council's budget. What can we do, I suppose, to protect the community? Because we've heard about, you know, the, the challenges that councils are, are facing. Um, but, you know, the, the solution is not always going to be, to be able to have flexibility to increase rates more. What is it that we can, can sort of do in, in that regard to ma- to assist with that more granular process?
Well, I think, you know, I think, uh, councils do long-term financial planning. Okay, so, you know-
You talk about the community strategic plan in your submission.
Yeah, through the community strategic plan and they're required to do it as part of the IPNR. So, you know, councils are long-term strategic planning. But, you know, I think, I've, I have heard anecdotally of one council who went for a special rate variation and was told by IPART, you can't have it because you've got too much money in reserves. So, you know, if you run down reserves, then how do you respond i- when something like, what's happened to Peter, happens? Or there's, there is a flooding disaster and you need to fix roads quickly? Or you need to get staff out in overtime or, you know, so you, there, there's only so much long-term planning you can do. And then there's, you know, what you do when there is an unexpected disaster. Now, you know, most of us would deal with an unexpected disaster with planned savings. But councils aren't encouraged in some ways to have planned savings simply because, you know, if they want a special rate variation, not to do business as usual, IPART come back and say, well, you know, you've got all of this money. Why aren't you expending that? Why are you asking for a special rate variation? You know, and the council said, well, you know, that's our, that's our fund in case we, there's an emergency. And, you know, and we know that there have been multiple emergency type situations over the last five years, most of them to do with climate, climate activities. You know, then you add to that the long lead-in time for councils to get paid for road repairs, um, but through the disaster, um, the do- what is it? The disaster road funding.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, thanks. And, um, so there's an enormous lead time. You know, I've got councils fighting with Transport for New South Wales over things like, should it be eight millimetres of gravel or should it be 15 millimetres of gravel? And things not getting repaired as a consequence. So I think, you know, I think councils have long-term financial planning well, well placed. I think the problem is that the rates peg is business as usual, so there's no expansion or enhancement of service. So it's, it's specifically designed for no growth, as, as it stands at the moment. Okay, so in a no-growth scenario for your, for, for your, um, income, yes, what do you do if you want to grow? Well, you have to pay something back. And there is no allowance at all for some emergency, whether it be something like the childcare centre closing down or, you know, a rainfall, an unexpected rainfall event that means all of your staff are out on overtime for days on end, closing roads and keeping people safe. And then, you know, there's emergency repairs. I think, you know, it would be great to have, um, some kind of funding available. But I, I'm not quite sure how, how that works, so, and Peter might have a better idea.
Look, the, the only thing I can add, you know, Julie makes the point about, it, it is a statutory requirement, integrated planning and reporting process. You know, we, we do have to have a community strategic plan and I just make the point, from my understanding, that is the community's plan, not, not the council's. We're just the facilitator and the custodian. Uh, and of course, part of that IPNR framework is also a long-term financial plan. And I think, I think we, we, we approach those things separate to the rate peg. You know, we, we, we wait for the rate peg to be announced each year and then we sort of work our next 12-month budget around that. But somehow, I, I'm, I'm not sure how, but somehow that, that rate peg and the IPART process and the council's IPNR process needs to talk to each other better. You know, because there is a process there for a community strategic plan, for the community to tell us what its priorities are. There is a process there to have a 10-year, you know, long-term financial plan, but I'm not sure it talks to the IPART and rate pegging process very well. So, so that's the point, um, I think I'd, I'd, I'd make. And the only other point I'd make, again, I'm not sure what the answer is, but I think the answer, in terms of, you know, local government's ability to fund infrastructure and services, the answer lies more in the, that financial relationship between all three levels of government. I, I know as councillors we exist, um, you know, we're just an arm of the state government. We only exist by virtue of an act of state parliament. But I think it's the financial relationship between all three levels of government where the answer lies about ongoing level government sustainability.
With the example that you gave, um, you talk about the community strategic planning in your, um, submission as, you know, something that is, is already in place and is a really good, you know. Was things like the childcare centre, would that have been part of that community strategic plan? Or is that then an additional thing that, you know, if we're gonna use that as the basis by which to fund councils, how do we sort of protect and prepare for the unexpected shocks that, you know?
Um, I can, I can only speak for Lockhart's case, uh, uh, situation, of course, not for the other Rerock member councils. But in our case, the community strategic plan did, um, acknowledge, uh, our existing involvement in childcare services, particularly the, the, um, USH at The Rock, our other township. And it did, um, indicate that we, you know, the community wanted us to look at a similar service at Lockhart, our other township, uh, which we did. And we, we established a, a NUSH on a trial basis. The long daycare centre though, that was never anticipated. And it's not something that came out of the CSP process, probably because the existing private operator had been there for years and no one was really anticipating what was about to happen to happen. So, so the CSP did, yeah, did cover off on some aspects of our involvement in children's services, but not the speli- specific dilemma we, we ended up facing.
Thank you. Um, that's unfortunately all we've got time for, um, this morning. I thank you both for making time to give evidence inquiry. Our committee secretary will be in touch with you if there are any questions on notice. Thank you again.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Welcome to our next inquiry participants. We have a couple of members joining us online as well, um, from Griffith Council. So I'm just checking that they're, um... Wonderful. Thanks, we'll just do a quick audio check if that's all right. Uh, Griffith, um, can you hear us?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, thank you so much. Uh, we'll just, we'll start the, um, the next inquiry session now. Um, I might ask the witnesses in the room to commence, if I can, starting on my left, um, with stating their name, position, title and swearing either the oath or the affirmation. And then we'll move to you Griffith online, thank you.
Peter Thompson, General Manager, Wagga Wagga City Council. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Dallas Taut, the Mayor of the City of Wagga. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Carolyn Rodney, Chief Financial Officer at Wagga Wagga City Council. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Um, now moving online to our witnesses from Griffith. Um, if I could ask you to both, again, state your name, position, title and swear either the oath or the affirmation.
Doug Carr, uh, City Council. Swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Good morning, and my name is Brett Stone Street, General Manager of Griffith City Council. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Um, would either of you like to start by making a short opening statement? We might start with Wagga in the room.
Make the short one, it's, uh, on the fly, so watch out. Uh, just to let you know that the Wagga City Council's submission formed part of the, we had input into the Canberra Region JO because we're an affiliate men with them. So our input is in that report. Probably four things, it won't take too long because I know you'll have a lot of questions, um, that lead to this inquiry and it's fantastic that we're having this inquiry and we're able to come and visit and talk in person. Um, the age-old issue of rate pegging, but also the rate peg increases. So that, uh, hampers the ability of councils to raise rates when they're, when they need to. It's, it's a good control to have so councils don't go over the top with that. But the process is really, uh, the year before, I think, was the issue about the rate peg increase each year and the legendary 0.7% increase that came down from IPART. So those sort of things. So seeing those changes happening and having the increases, having some link to reality is fantastic. The second issue that le- The second issue that leads us into the ability to fund infrastructure and services is just the age-old issue of cost shifting from different levels of government or different organisations. Reliance on grants, which does also come with some of that cost shifting. So a lot of councils, smaller and medium particular councils, we're okay at the moment with our percentage of own-source revenue. But small and medium-sized councils have an issue with the amount of grants that they're reliant on. And if they don't get grants, then financially they are in big trouble. The other thing with reliance on grants is that generally, the grants are fantastic. Well and truly welcomed to build up our infrastructure or increase our services. But with that never comes on costs, the whole of life costs from the projects that you're building using those grants. Because then you have to find those extra increases out of your ongoing budgets from year to year. And the last point I'll make, everyone will make it when they come here, is the decreasing contribution from the FAGS grants. I think it's down to 0.46 or 0.47, depending who you're talking to at the moment. And that's a major impostor to local government across the whole country. We were just recent at the Algra Conference that's come up again and again and again, and you'll get it again and again and again. They're my four or five hit points that I wanted to just get over, a message to you before you open up with questions. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. We'll now move to Griffith online. Do either of you have a short opening statement?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Good morning and thank you for the opportunity to attend today. Prior to the inquiry, like so many other councils in New South Wales, financial sustainability is primarily changing. Griffith City Council has been very creative during the last decade in containing costs, on containing revenue and expenses. Despite these measures, the files sought by our council to apply for special rate variation effective before twenty twenty five come as a nation emerged from the COVID pandemic. Combination for inflation, rate pegging levels consistently lower than the actual cost of doing business, cost shifting on local government from the state government, inflation, the amount of borrowing and the total FAGs debts. All made from this future, that's all that's... Like suddenly around us, with the council's application of previous increases partly approved, this point is likely required. What is required fundamentally changed to come from the amount is to dismiss the laws government of self-escalating decision-making. Pegging is a popular policy, it is a... Cost shifting with the state government or the local government in New South Wales is well documented and currently adds damage to sixty dollars per annum to each way paid. Griffith City Council is trusted to have several current reserves on the New South Wales. As part of the council's cost containment strategy, we have investigated the option to increase the station reserves back to the New South Wales government. That's been advised that the minister is unlikely to approve any application by council to relinquish history and station. This is another example of cost shifting to the cities. During the last decade, the New South Wales strongly has invested strongly in university, which is very much appreciated. The ongoing appreciation of these assets, however, is defined within council's annual budget, which places further stringering to the right for me. Like many other growing regional areas, with the timbers housing. The council has been proactive in organising shifts with stakeholders that get firmly with the shape of the mission. The Grand Ford Wausau project, shipping with Argon Wausau, has just completed twenty-four hotel rooms. Sixty percent of the new tenants previous to here. The projects also include an efficient falling to forty-two police service slots ready for shipping of more affordable homes when approached. When more projects likely ready to activate through the use of the land in the cities, these projects were stalled due to the New South Wales Treasury Direction ninety-two point two, which requires smart turn for the transfer of land from the publicist. This directive should be relaxed and is vested to a council for Wausau. While Wausau has brought Griffith City Council very keen to play its part in bringing over any of the church for example, the St. Mike's and the House of Work, it's one of the smaller ways in the New South Wales government is focusing investment, managing hospital projects, this policy essentially blocks much regional city council. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to questions, just to my colleagues, if anyone wants to start. The honourable Sam Faraway.
Thank you, Chair, and welcome. Good to see everyone here again. I'd like to ask both Wagga Council and Griffith Council the same question. So we'll start with roads. Part of the three Rs of local government, as they say. How do you think road funding should be distributed as a, because roads is a key piece of infrastructure for community? What is the best way to distribute funding to support councils for road funding, to repair roads on your network?
I'll field that first. My mayor may want to follow it up. But road funding at the moment in the regions is dramatically under what it should be to maintain the quality of that asset. That's just a statement of fact. So in terms of this inquiry, there should, at the very least, be an acknowledgement that the funding that goes to regional roads is not quite maintaining the current rate of deterioration. So we're not maintaining the roads, we're not even just quite maintaining the current...
Is that excluding natural disaster events? You're talking about BAU?
That's just normal, what we should be doing to maintain roads at a standard that doesn't represent a day of reckoning coming. And we've just recently had a few years of days of reckoning where following a period of dry, which hides a lot of sins. We had a period of wet and the lack of funding on roads becomes immediately apparent. And the people and businesses and communities that use those roads are outraged at the quality of roads that they're forced to deal with, which is simply a result of the lack of spending. So my answer to your question would be, as a minimum, the state government in terms of allocating funding sources should look at the length of roads that councils are asked to maintain because they're different, depending on which council you look at. It should set a threshold for what the standard should be to maintain those roads. Because again, it's not a secret, every council would be very well aware of the gap between what they spend on their roads and what they should be spending on their roads. And then that should be addressed in terms of the funding source. And I'd suggest that there's a very great difference between the expenditure of metro councils on roads and gaps and the expenditure of regional councils on roads and gaps.
So when you say a difference, what do you mean between, in terms of the funding that metro councils receive, proportionate to the size of their road network? You're saying they get more?
A, metro councils won't be maintaining the same road length as regionals. And B, metro councils, if you compare the income streams to metros from rates alone, receive dramatically more rates than regional councils. And yet regional councils are maintaining, in our case, more than three thousand kilometres of road.
So to follow up, if that's the case, you would support what the former coalition government introduced around funding based on size of road network for each LGA? So you say that Wagga Regional Council has three thousand kilometres worth of road network. That must be sealed and unsealed, that be correct?
Oh, yes, it is.
So obviously, if there is a funding pool, which we've seen had a little bit to do with, the former coalition government to distribute that funding, the New South Wales government did initially keep that model. But do you think that model is a far more equitable model to support any council across the region of New South Wales with their road network?
We would support any funding initiative of government which recognises the task that regional councils are faced with maintaining roads.
But Mr. Thompson, if you want to, if we're to have more than a talk fest here today, we need recommendations. That's why I'm asking around, do you, it's about equity in the funding models. Because if you've got one pot of money, it's how do we make it equitable for councils? Whether it is Griffith-Wagga, or it can be Warren-Bungleshire, or any council about making it equitable. So do you think that the only way forward should be maybe to look at roadblock grants to be reviewed? And if there are funding streams coming from state government, that it should be purely based on the size of road network to return equity to those councils?
I would agree that it should be based on length of roads to be maintained and their current state.
Has it gotten worse in the last twelve months in terms of funding for BAU activities? Not disaster-related activities, but road funding projects that enhance the road network as a BAU activity?
I couldn't really answer that as BAU because we have had a lot more money to spend on roads because of the wet weather, be it disaster-related or otherwise. And so for the first time in a very, very long time, we have spent a lot of money on roads. But that just Band-Aids this underlying situation, which is the reason we've had to do that spend is because the roads didn't have the money spent on them previously, which unless that funding is going to be ongoing or recurrent, which clearly it's not, then future governments will face exactly the same issue with exactly, if those weather events happen again.
Do you think councils should have to justify a BCR to fix their local roads? And should it be a contest, a beauty contest as to which road project gets funded over another?
Oh, no, I think the government, whichever government is in power, should accept that the community needs to travel on roads of a particular standard and that's what should be funded, not a business cost ratio that different councils have differing abilities to put together.
Over to you, Mr., to Brett and Doug from Griffith, the same questions, I suppose, around equity. Do you support a road funding model that continues dispersing funds from state government programs based on size of road network, one? Two, do you think that is the most equitable way to disperse road funding? And three, do you think that a BCR should be applied for two councils to repair and upkeep the regional and local road network?
Thank you. I might just, thanks, and then the mayor can jump on that. A couple of issues, I might just draw on the evidence base, the recent publication a few months ago from the Grattan Institute, Pitfalls and Potholes. Basically, that document showed what's happened to the road network across state factory. Over, probably over a decade or a couple of decades. And what councils, in fact, regional councils, have basically done over the last couple of decades as a consequence of restriction on revenue streams due to rate pegging, cost fifty and the like, and the fare grant reduction? It's really been the road network that suffered, or it's been the balancing item in councils' operating statements. It has to do this one way or the other, otherwise insolvency looks down the barrel. So there has certainly been a deterioration, not just in the last year or two or three or even five. It's been a long-term deterioration in the road network because of that. The fare grant, I'd pre-shape, this is, that's a federal question, but I will have, I will touch on it. The fare grant formula provides a minimum payment of thirty percent of the formula to councils, regardless of their need for funds. And that's where metropolitan councils pull a premium out of the total bucket of thirty percent. In New South Wales, there's approximately sixteen councils in New South Wales take a hundred million dollars out of the bucket due to the formula regardless of their need on their road network. So for our council, yes, there does need to be a focus on the length of that road network and the condition of that network in terms of the amount of funding that goes to local government. In terms of the BCR, BCRs work better when you've got economies of scale and you've got very large populations. The net travel times and the like of freight and persons. When you've got a large population, those number very quickly. For Australia, we need cost subsidisation in order for the country to continue. And so for our council, BCR, no, is not the answer to this. It's to look at the long-term future of the country and return some funding to those long and deterioration rating, road networks in the regions. And Mr. Lee?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thanks for the question, Sam. I think that's the most, I think the other part to be considered as well is the economic drivers in different areas. We can certainly look at eleven hundred kilometres of local business, managers, we need some back coverage. And the prosperity of our area, of course, of New South Wales, the state, it's out of the area, I think it needs to be looking nice as well. Certainly, I don't support the BCR model, I don't think it's applicable. But do you think that they should be at a third level, right? It would be certainly be sure.
Onto another topic, and that is, we've heard throughout the inquiry across the state, the volatility in grants. And Mayor of Wagga raised that in your opening remarks as well today. And in particular around small to medium-sized councils that may not have the rate base to support their overall budget. So my question, I suppose, first off, and I'll go Wagga then to Griffith. Have you seen a reduction in available grants or secured grants in the past twelve months from state government?
I'm going to answer that for Wagga and say, we haven't. We've been fortunate to have been the recipient of quite good grants in the last twelve months. A lot of those, though, are related to the housing crisis that we're currently facing, but they're gratefully received. The other comment that must be on the back of that, though, is how much our co-contribution is. And often a grant can be a rod rather than a saviour. And we're fortunate that we are a larger regional council. And the mayor's comments and your comments chime in at that point in relation to, if you're a smaller council, often you can't make that co-contribution. So the quantum of grants you're receiving on its own shouldn't be looked in isolation for the context in which that grant is given.
So touching on excluding grants relating to housing, have you seen a reduction or increase in grants for basic community infrastructure? For projects like toilet blocks, skate parks, things that have been funded for years to support councils, but also community infrastructure that may not have required a BCR? Other than housing, have you seen a movement in the available grants and secured grants for the smaller type of community infrastructure in the last twelve months?
In Wagga's case, I don't believe so. My chief financial officer may wish to comment. But we, again, we've received community grants in recent years and I don't believe that comment bears out that we received any less.
So I think it's just a more competitive process. So Wagga City Council has always been quite successful in obtaining grants over the past ten, fifteen years. Other councils have had to obviously get on board and submit applications as well, so it's a more competitive process.
Do you have a dedicated grants officer, Wagga?
We have, in the past financial year, put on a dedicated grants officer because we felt that it was such an important role. We were obviously undertaking that process ad hocly across the organisation. And so in the past financial year, we've put on a dedicated grants officer in order to smooth the process and to ensure that we are in the best position to receive grants.
So when you say it's been more competitive, is that because fair to say every grant that has been available for councils to apply for has had a BCR attached to it?
When I say more competitive, more councils are putting in for them. So we're in a pool of applicants and we need to obviously ensure that we meet the eligibility criteria. And there's only obviously so much money to go around.
A question for Brett or Doug from Griffith. In terms of that community infrastructure, we've heard from Wagga that obviously they've received been successful in grants, in particular with housing. Has Griffith been successful with grants other than housing grants? And I'm sort of specifically wanting to know around community infrastructure. And I would also draw upon funding programs that were put in place, like stronger country communities funding, where it was dispersed based on LGA. Every LGA got the same amount of funding. So has, in Griffith's case, have you been successful in securing grants? Or has there been grants to apply for and have you found it more competitive because of the number of applications or BCRs applied to these grants?
We've definitely seen a downturn in available grants over the last twelve months.
Sorry to interrupt you, councillor Curran. We're having a bit of trouble hearing you, in particular when you're speaking. I'm not sure if it's possible to move the microphone closer to you or speak more directly into it. We have checked the audio visual at this end, but if that's possible, sorry to interrupt.
No, you're all right. Is that any better?
Hopes better. Thank you.
No, sorry about that. So yes, in the last twelve months, we definitely have seen a downturn. As I was saying, we were quite lucky prior to that. The two things, the problem with grant funding, depending on what it is, is the ongoing depreciation cost afterwards. The grant's great to get. No council's going to say no to a grant. But we've got to be able to fund that moving forward and that obviously has to come out of our annual operating budget. And as I say, the downturn in the last twelve months, we appreciate everybody, state, federal and local government is doing it a lot.
we appreciate everybody, state, federal and local government is doing it a lot tougher now. But certainly it has become more competitive and there seems to be less grants to apply for, feel. And I'll hand over to Brett, but certainly we are seeing a very different dynamic over the last twelve months and probably looking forward to the next twelve months. We don't see a great deal of change in that, from what I can see.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could I just supplement that, just by saying, going back to the mayor's comments at the introductory, about providing the flexibility at the local level to make decisions around allocation of resources. So I'll mention specifically about the housing task, which is obviously a major issue for the entire nation. Our council has been quite innovative, and the mayor touched on it earlier with in terms of the housing issue or question. We have been innovative. We're agile and able to work with partners to get results on the ground. But where things come unstuck for us as a medium-sized regional council is we don't meet the scale criteria for housing grant matching funds. So Treasury clearly have been involved here significantly in terms of requiring a number of homes yielded to, in order to qualify to get the maximum outcome for the state. Our council, again, growing like many councils, New South Wales, the regional level, but we don't qualify for that minimum yield. So we're cut out of that grant scenario completely. We'd like to see, it's basically a return on dollar rather than an absolute return on the number of homes. Get some agility back into the local government sector in the regions.
That's Scott Farlow here. Just which grant program is that, that you're applying where you're not reaching the minimum threshold?
There was a fifty-fifty round of grant funding allocated only in the last, the name escapes me, but I'm sorry.
If you could take that on notice, that'd be great.
Yeah, I can take that on notice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I might start with a couple of questions now, just to, again, we proceed with Wagga first and then Griffith afterwards. I wanted to start with a question around, we talked about providing flexibility for councils to make these sorts of decisions on behalf of communities. Do councils, and you know, I'm talking about the elected councillors as well as council staff, have the skills and knowledge required to make decisions like that on behalf of the community in terms of when we look at, you know, risks, you know, being a responsible form of government? I just invite you to make comments on that.
You're talking overall, in general, in community needs and wants?
Yeah.
So I think you use skills and abilities, but I think the other word that needs to be added is information.
Yep.
So we do a lot of, as all, most, I won't speak for every council, but every council does community consultation. We're in the middle of our CSP consultation now. It's been going, I think it's going to be going for eighteen months or more by the time we finished it. We're present at every event. There is formal, informal events everywhere. So I'm really comfortable, and I've been on Wagga now for, this will be the end of my twelfth year, that the consultation that's been undertaken over the last several years is comprehensive. So the information part, I feel is completely covered, that we, when we get to the council meeting room and making decisions on whatever we're making decisions on, we are completely comfortable that we've got the information from our community and we have a feel for what our community wants and where they want us to head. And that then factors into the skills and abilities. It gives you the ability to have the confidence that you're deciding what your community wants. And as far as skills and abilities, you know, there's an ex-councillor around the table here, and when you're a new councillor, you know, there's a learning process. But the staff, and I can only speak for Wagga, the staff at Wagga, whether it's in finance or any other area, if you need work on that, they will work on that to put every councillor in the position that they have the needed skills and abilities in order to make a decision when the information's presented and outline the risks. What's the benefit? What's the downside if we don't do this? What are the risks? So I'm quite comfortable in stating that I have no issue whether around the table at Wagga that that happens, information, skill and abilities to make the right decisions.
And in terms of how that aligns with the ongoing financial sustainability of councils, do you think the two align, or is there, you know, a discrepancy there?
It aligns one hundred and twenty percent of the time. We can't make a decision in our council unless there's a funding source. If there's no funding source, doesn't come up, there's no recommendation, there's no resolution. And we spend a lot of our time, we don't just talk about the budget at budget time, we talk about the budgets all the time. So financial considerations and that responsibility comes hand in hand with everything else that's always the top of everyone's mind, whether it's staff or councillors.
Thank you. Griffith?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to echo Dallas's points. We employ very skillful employees at all of our councils, and very difficult to get anything passing. Not that we try too often, but any time there's any discussion about what we want to do moving forward, similar to Wagga, we have to be able to validate that. I think we talk about the skills, I think there's another word missing there. I think it needs to be trust. Dallas very rightly said, we probably overconsult. In terms of levels of government that talk to our communities, there isn't one out of the three that does it better than local government. And I think that whether you're a properly elected mayor, whether you're an elected official, you've got to be able to do that groundwork. You've got to be able to prove that you have some skills, some understanding. And then, again, as Dallas rightly pointed out, there is a lot of training. A lot of staff take a lot of time to make sure that we're on the right path. And most times when we go for grant funding, we also then have to prove that further up the chain. So it's not something that we can wing it. It is really something that we have to have a good founding, a good foundation and good proof behind every decision that we make. We don't always get it right, but I think a lot of times we are, as a local government entity, tarred with the brush of some of our counterparts that may not do it well, as opposed to the councils that do it very well and prove that we are able to move forward. If the test is whether we need to apply for an SRV or not, I think that that's probably a little bit unfair as a whole of government approach, because there's a lot of factors outside of the decisions that we make in terms of financial sustainability that are leading to this. And we know that over ninety percent of councils in the last ten years have had to apply for SRVs. Brett?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I would just add, I'd make reference to our special rate variation application, that we've been through that process and the first tranche of that is starting this financial year. With the final report that IPART put out, they did compliment Griffith City Council on its community consultation, the extent of that consultation, and essentially the depth of information that was provided to the community, leading into their final decision. I will say that the council was not criticised. Certainly, we were under a lot of scrutiny, but I didn't hear much criticism, if any, about council wasting funds. There was certainly a lot of comment from the community about not wanting to pay more rates and the cost of living, et cetera. Absolutely, those issues brought forward, but not waste of funds. And I suppose, further what the mayor mentioned, about just the length of time it's taken for us to reach this decision to apply for special rate variation, the councillors watch very, very closely. Any proposal that comes through across their table, they need to see where the end result financially is for that and how would it impact us in the long term. And also, whether it's the right, I suppose, choice of allocation of arms, whether it should be something else.
Thank you. I might ask now a question about depreciation. We've heard a bit about this through the course of inquiry and some of the impacts this has on local councils. Does Wagga or Griffith indeed have a view around the depreciation guidelines as they currently stand, and whether or not there should be opportunity for councils to value assets differently, whether it's less frequently or otherwise?
I'll speak briefly, and then I will flick to my mayor. We would definitely like to, the government, to re-look at how depreciation is done at a local government level. A lot of the depreciation, a proportion of the depreciation which we include in our books is really just an entry on a page and is completely meaningless. It's depreciating assets that we will never replace as a council, or if we do replace it, it's wholly reliant on grant funding, replacing it not on source revenue. So the depreciation number's really not informing you anything about your financial capacity or your financial vitality. It also ends up being quite silly for some assets, and our airport is a classic example of that, where we don't own the airport, we lease the airport, and because of the, from the federal government, and because that lease is ending in, well, it was one year, it's in two years now. If we do major capital expenditure, we need to depreciate the whole of that capital expenditure across the remaining portion of the lease. And our example is a five million dollar taxiway extension. So that five million dollars, most of which was funded by state government, is depreciated across approximately four years. And we have no security that we'll even be the next tenant of that airport. So in terms of what that number is telling you in relation to Wagga's financial position, it's completely a misleading statement because it doesn't relate to the, to the actual situation on the ground at all in any way, just to the way the depreciation is calculated. Mr. Mayor?
I was going to comment, but Peter's covered what I wanted to, but I know the CFO was itching to say something.
So you mentioned briefly about the revaluation cycle. Five years is too low, in my opinion. The council should have the choice. So that might be a guide. But yeah, five years for a revaluation of a whole road, of a whole category, council should have the choice and there should be like a minimum and a maximum, I think.
Okay.
The amount of work and effort that it creates, not only for local government employees, but also for the audit office in order to audit that work, which then is then a cost on council because we have to pay for that audit work.
Thank you. It's very useful. Please do.
And what do you think it should be?
So maybe, yeah, seven to ten years, but up to the council. If they feel that a different treatment method, if their assets are not valued in accordance with how they think the asset is behaving, then I think it should be an opt-in. But I think five years, you finish one year and you're on to the next. It's just an ongoing cycle. And I see very little benefit in what the information is presenting.
Thank you. Griffith, just invite you to make comment.
Well, thank you. I think in terms of depreciation of assets, there is far too much debate and procrastination occurred over many, many years about the details of this. At the end of the day, the depreciation is there to consciously force the council into recognising that in the future, at various points in the future, in terms of its capital expenditure plan, those assets will need to be replaced. And it might be considered by some as a book entry. Well, it is a book entry on the day each year, but those actual costs do come back to bear. So depreciation is fundamentally required to be allocated each year, whether it's every five years, six years, seven years in terms of valuations. Yes, we would agree with Wagga that we need to ensure that we don't create arduous amounts of work at the council level in order to justify an audit review. Fundamentally, it's about getting cash into the bank account, into reserve, in order to replace assets down the track. So standardising depreciation rates, standardising the number of years from which value classes will be reviewed, for me, is important.
It's the case, though, that there are some, and we've heard the example of the taxi rank modifications, some councils would never be in a position to replace or indeed would choose to replace an asset. So why have it sit on their books, to use that example? Is it, is it the case, Griffith, that we should be treating some assets differently in terms, or is it we depreciate, have everything on the books? I'm just thinking in terms of your council's ability to, to fund projects, you know, moving forward. There are some projects which you're going to be reliant on another level of government to fund, surely.
Madam Chair, if I might make a comment on that front. For me, it's a matter for the elected councillors and their community to make decisions in that regard in terms of what infrastructure they do replace in the long term. The fact the councillors might not be able to afford, or see it as a priority or not, to replace certain infrastructure shouldn't be grounds by which those assets are not actually on the books. So I think the full story should be put there, long-term capital expenditure replacement plans. If the councillors decide that they can't afford replacements and drop off certain assets that are just essentially going to wear out and be retired, that's a local decision that should be made.
Thank you. Do you have any further comments, Wagga? Just before I move to my next question? No. The next question may again be a question for your CFO, but please feel free to answer as you see fit. Should councils move to cost-based accounting versus fair value accounting? And feel free to take it on notice if you want my time to instead of the answer.
Yeah, I'll probably take that on notice. It's probably a big question that I wouldn't be able to answer.
Sure. Griffith, did you have any views?
We'd like to take that on notice as well, Madam Chair.
Sure. Not a problem at all. Well, that's a quick answer. I will move to my next questions. I'll just look to my colleague, Dr. Amanda Condesey. Yep, okay, beautiful.
Thanks so much for coming down to Wobree today, and thanks to Griffith Online. I was interested, particularly Mayor Taut. You've obviously got a deficit budget for the next couple of years at Wagga, and this committee is looking at a really broad range of ways that we can support councils to increase their revenue. My question is, if we can't do that, what would it mean for your community and the people that you're representing moving forward, noting that you're riding in a deficit?
Set me up at a pincer movement here. So it's a balanced budget for the one we've just adopted for twenty-four, twenty-five. The years after that are deficit, but not the upcoming year. Just to clarify, it wasn't two years. And that's a, it's becoming more and more difficult each year to make that balanced budget. And as the general manager has already said, Wagga's reached that scale where we have the ability to pull, we have grant writers, we're able to pull grants in, and we have that scale to roll forward. And even with us, it's difficult. We're having to start to seriously look at cutting services, et cetera, now. And to answer your question, what will happen if we can't get more revenue into councils? That's what will start happening. It's already started happening in other councils, smaller and medium-sized councils. It'll hit Wagga at some point. I feel, I don't want to try and predict it, but at some point in the next term of council, if I'm there, whoever's around the table will be looking at those sort of things. Because if things don't change in the, in the mix in local government the way it is, then, as Doug has said earlier, everyone will be looking for some form of special rate variation. We've had one in the term I've been there, but it was a special one for the levy upgrade. It was put in place for the five years, and then we made a conscious decision to pull it back out again. Once we'd used it, we went back to our normal rates. So, and just for, I've imagined Snowy, Snowy Valleys talk, talk anyway, in an article that went up on the weekend. They were successful in getting state funding several years ago, a million dollars to upgrade the community and library centre in Batlow, which is fantastic. We talk about ongoing and recurrent costs and not being covered. Now, there's a report that's gone out to the community in the councillor meeting, I think next week or the week after, and they're probably cutting it from five days a week to two days a week. And that's the only community place that community have. So in answer to your question, whether it's a Wagga, a Griffith, or a Snowy Valleys or a Batlow, if we can't fix the financial model of local government, whether it's state or federal funding, that's where everyone's going to end up. There'll be less and less services because that's the only place we can cut. Because we're the only level of government that can't form, can't set our own income or increase revenue easily. It's either through special rate variations or having other businesses that produce surpluses in order to feed to the council at Wagga. We have our livestock marketing centre, which does that. But we've made a conscious decision, do I select the funding there? Because we do capital improvements there out of our own cash from the operation. So if councils are able to have those sort of business centres, that's okay. But we need the structural issue with the funding from state, federal and local government and rate pegs all needs to be. to be, I'm hoping that's kind of what's going to come out in your recommendations from this inquiry. Long way around, but that's the end of it. At the end of the day, it'll be a reduction in services and detriment for the communities that we're there for.
I have a specific follow-up for WOGA, but I was just going to see if Griffiths wanted to add to that.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Con. That's a great question. Our budget that we've adopted in the forthcoming year is a deficit in a consolidated term. Moving forward, we do move into surpluses, however, only in terms of consolidated. So our sewer and water fund are propping up our general fund. Our general fund is in deficit for the forward 10-year projection. I could not agree more, although we, and that's with two years of a special rate variation. We applied for three, didn't get the third year. And I can absolutely see in the next term, without some major structural change to the way that local government is treated and funded, that we will be going back to our community, seeking some alternatives, whether it be service cuts or increased revenue. There's no way known that we can continue with a three or four million dollar deficit in our general fund every year, acknowledging that the majority of that is depreciation. So I think that's really important. I know we're not talking financial assistance grants here, but that deterioration is costing councils somewhere in the vicinity of seven million dollars a year. That seven million dollars a year would make our communities, and every community within Australia that relies on the federal assistance grant, much more viable, and ability for us to grow. And that growth then goes back into both state and federal coffers, with communities that are able to put more back in. Great, do you enjoy it?
Well, I think you've covered it. No worries. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chair, if I may have got one more question for WOGA. I was really interested to see that you've got a new program looking into processing development applications using artificial intelligence. Could someone speak to that project and how that works?
I can definitely speak to that. That's actually a program that the state government have sponsored. So there was a grant process to support that. The Department of Planning pre-qualified. I think there were three different companies who could all provide the AI software, which was job-ready, if you like, for local government to use it within its planning processes. And then they invited councils to participate in that grant application process, to take that, one of those companies on and implement that software. We've embraced it because development applications are one thing that everyone's sensitive about in relation to councils. And if you put the application in, in an ideal world, the person who receives your application at the counter would approve it and stamp it, and you'd walk out of the building with an approval. The reality is, you can't do that at councils anymore. It goes through a portal, drops to us once it's through the state government portal. And the AI software that the government has pre-qualified is aimed at trying to make sure those applications are able to be processed as quickly as they possibly can, once they drop out of the portal. So it's not AI making the decision, it's AI making sure the applications are appropriate. Can I just go back to the last question? Indulge me, because I didn't get a chance to speak. But whilst our, and it's sort of, it's an undercurrent for this inquiry, at least the questions we're getting, our long-term financial plan predicts we're appropriate deficit budgets, and that's, I think, where your question came from. The reality is, at least in the many years that have passed recently, our council doesn't ever adopt a deficit budget. And what happens at budget time is that the staff and the councillors get together and determine what are the priorities and which things can fall to the floor this year, so that there's a balanced budget that's achieved. So hence the reason why the mayor answered the question, to say this year it was a balanced budget. There's no magic to that. We sit down every year, and we haven't yet had the appetite to enter into a deficit budget. And if I can tie back to an earlier question, which was, do councillors have the skills to actually manage the financial aspects of a council? That example, or that narration probably emphasises where the councillors' skills come into play for their community, is as bureaucrats, we are paid professional salaries to make sure the councillors are equipped with the right information about the financial position or financial implication of every decision. The councillors are equipped with that community representation to actually make the decision on what are the priorities, and what are the second priorities which drop to the floor, based on the financial implications of each of those decisions.
Thank you. Please, yep.
Just in terms of the AI planning components. So in terms of your trial to date, how have you found it?
We've only just, it's literally only just started.
Like today, or?
A couple of weeks ago. I haven't seen. I know that we're about to engage a consultant. I can't even tell you that we've actually picked the one that we're going with. But I would say, we won't know a result from that in terms of whether it's saved meaningful time, or whether it's just another level of frustration for users of our service for probably six months. But I will say that one of our councillors was encouraging us to, to look at AI as a way of trying to speed up our planning processes. And it's definitely something that, that we would embrace if it saves time, and it's cheaper than employing a living, breathing soul to sit there and actually correct things in a planning application.
And as you were sort of outlining, it seems to be that it's not the assessment, so to speak, that is being done by AI, but it's largely checking that all the documentation and that is there to proceed to the next stage. Is that?
That's 100%, 100% correct. The AI system, and to the extent you're getting the impression I am a whiz at AI, that would be wrong. I'm not. But my understanding-
We're all finding our way.
I understand that the system is 100% reliant on us setting black and white standards. So is it within three metres, is it not within three metres, as opposed to a merit-based assessment? And if you're going through a development application process, rather than a compliant development process, that is based on a merit-based assessment. So at some point, there needs to be an individual that sits down and looks at the merit of that application, and makes a very human-based decision, rather than an AI decision.
And will AI be making any determinate in terms of priority? As to, you were talking about when it drops out of the system. Will it be making a value judgment as to what should be on the top of the pile, so to speak?
Not to my knowledge, and I'm just going to say no to that. It drops out of the system in terms of the portal, when all the boxes are ticked for the portal. So it's basically trying to let a user of the service being development processes in New South Wales, get a clear understanding of whether they're compliant at the time they lodge. And if they're not compliant, actually give them some direction on how they bring that into compliance, so that when they lodge, it actually has a smoother passage, rather than them finding out that something's missing after it's lodged.
Thank you. I might just finish with a question about procurement and infrastructure costs, which we've heard about, you know, throughout the inquiry, about the significant escalation in costs for delivering projects. In terms of the procurement that your councils do, is there a role, or how is that, you know, how is that going, I suppose? Invite you to make comment on that. And is there things that we could do to improve that, to, you know, reduce costs, or try and ameliorate some of these shocks that we've seen?
I'll do a quick political one, and then I'll leave it to the other two. As a councillor, I've seen in the 12 years I've been at WOGA, that in the last two to three years, with the increases in costs in projects, more often than not now, we have to reject all tenderers and go out for renegotiation. And even then, it's a battle. And then after that, in the period of time from when we do that to when the project's being built, we then have to come back and find out, find some more top-up costs from within the budget because of further increases in costs. And I know this is going in hand side, so I don't want to make a definitive statement, but whether some projects have been held up because of those increasing costs, we just haven't proceeded. I'll let Peter or Carolyn answer those. But those increases in costs are really detrimental to local government at the moment, as far as getting the tenders in, seeing the values that are on them, as opposed to what the budget was. And don't think that councils aren't reviewing their budgets on the capital projects every year. We go through them all the time. So we're not sitting there with a budget item for a capital project that was five years old and unrealistic. We're continually updating those. So that's my quick answer. And Peter or Carolyn?
Well, that's actually a really complex question, Chair. It's, we're certainly, or everyone in the state, including the state government, no doubt, has been impacted by the increases in civil construction costs, just to pick, to pick one item. That's not really a result of the procurement process per se. It's a result of the number of civil contractors that are available to do the work. Their costs of doing the work, because risk management across all levels of a civil construction business is much greater than it has been previously, and that comes at a cost. And because there has been quite a lot of grant funding flowing, it seems since COVID has stimulus, but it may have even been before that. There's a lot of work around, so contractors are pricing it based on their appetite to need that work. If there's another job that they've already won, then their price is higher, and we've certainly seen that as well. In terms of finding a solution for you, and I know that's where your question was coming from, I think the solution is probably longer term than simply a fiddle with the procurement process. And it is solely based on training more Australians to deliver civil infrastructure projects, and maybe managing their risk profile when they take on a project, in a way that might be slightly different to the way it is now. At some point, we need to get back to the actual costs of the job, rather than the job that's being tended.
Thank you. Griffith, just invite you, if you have any comments to make.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll follow Dallas's lead and make an elected official comment before I pass on to my General Manager. I think we go back to the previous discussion around flexibility and trust. In local government, we need to advertise a budget that shows what we're going to build and where we're going to build it. And then, funnily enough, when it comes time for letting that contract out, or the procurement part, the quote comes in remarkably close to that budgeted figure. I think that we need to be treated like businesses, where we're able to go and have those discussions and negotiations in a trusted manner, without the need to advertise it. Because I think that we're paying well over, we continue to get comments from our community, that, oh, we could have done that so much easier, so much cheaper. And why, why have you paid so much? And we're only able to let the contracts and those works out, following a due process, which is fine, but the due process is costing councils, and in a lot of cases, the state government through the grants process, well over what it should be costing, because of that advertisement need. And I think that we need to be much closer to the businesses providing it, and having those discussions, rather than saying, we've got a million dollars to build this, and $998,000 is, is the quote that comes in. And it's remarkable how many times it happens. And councillor, sorry, Mayor Taut said exactly the same thing. We're finding so many of our contracts and leases are now going out to being rejected, and then having those discussions afterwards, because the cost is outweighing the ability for us to be able to pay it. Right?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, I think one telling factor in all of this has been the COVID pandemic. Once, coming out of COVID pandemic, a couple of sort of major things for me have occurred. One, inflation has taken off. And secondly, the question of skill shortages. There've always been there, skill shortages, but there just seems to have been a less quantum of labour in a whole range of areas. The length of time from the, I suppose, when a project is initially budgeted and estimated, through to the point in time where it's delivered on the ground, when you've got a high inflation rate, we're not talking CPI, we're obviously talking the cost of building, but that length of time, when you've got a high inflation rate compounded in that, means that there's going to be a lot bigger impact on that, on that budget. And when, when we're talking about grants, for instance, so there's a, there's a whole phase of when terms and guidelines for grants are developed, the budget has to be developed well before that, included in your CapEx plan, then you apply for the grant. It's probably nine months or thereabouts, until there's actual tender on the ground, contractor, and then there's the time to make all of that happen on the ground. So I don't think in terms of procurement itself, there's a lot that should change at the moment. We do have the flexibility of the vendor panel at New South Wales level, where we can get that pre-approval happening to, I suppose, address the $250,000 tender threshold that we must go through. So I think it's a matter of the timeframe and inflation that's the big issue, towards.
Thank you. That's all we have time for in this, this hearing. Thank you very much to all of you for making time to give evidence today to the inquiry. The committee secretary will be in touch with you with regards to any questions on notice, and you'll have 21 days to respond. Thank you again. We'll now have a short break. We'll now have a short break. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome to our next inquiry participants. Thank you so much for making time to give evidence to the inquiry today. If I could ask both of you, starting on my left, to state your name, position, title, and swear either the oath or the affirmation, please.
Thank you. My name is councillor Kylie King, Mayor of Albury City, and I would like to make an affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. My name's Tracey Squire. I'm the acting CEO of Albury City, and I would like to make the affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Would either of you like to start by making a short opening statement?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today and for holding a hearing in Albury, acknowledging we're on rotary land, paying my respects. I'm sure our regional neighbours have appreciated not having to travel long distance, and I've caught up with a few of them this morning, so that's noted. Thank you. Councils across Australia and New South Wales provide important goods, services, and facilities, as we know, to our local communities. It's important particularly to acknowledge the breadth of services and infrastructure provided by regional cities and rural councils, we would argue, in comparison to metropolitan councils. It's that eternal balancing act, isn't it? Keeping rates low, as low as possible, while also delivering on the services and the infrastructure that our communities expect and also deserve, as articulated in the Community Strategic Plan, the development of which is a legislative requirement. We cannot do this with a rate peg system that doesn't take into account the aspirations of our community and appears to be incapable of sustainably supporting the delivery of regional services and infrastructure in a dynamic and rapidly changing economic landscape. It's Albury City's view that a better approach would be to utilise the New South Wales local government's integrated planning and reporting framework to better effect. We've just done it recently. We publicly exhibit our draft budgets each year so that our community can have a say on the projects, services, and initiatives that we will deliver. We provide responses to every issue raised, the majority of which do relate to additional services or infrastructure that our community is seeking, or the timing of their delivery. Councils are democratically elected. We don't need to be held accountable by the New South Wales government. We would argue that we will be held accountable by our communities. Thank you.
If I could add, Madam Chair, the rate peg is limited in its purpose and adds to the financial sustainability challenges of regional cities and rural councils in particular. It doesn't take into account demand for changes in service levels. And at the moment, we're relying on a special variation process to fund changes in service provision rather than establishing a sustainable rate methodology from the outset. The process associated with special variations is resource intensive and politically contentious, and unfortunately has become a place of last resort for councils, as we've seen over the last 12 months. The current approach is not working for regional cities and rural councils. An alternative approach is required and one that recognises our unique challenges. As part of the solution to our financial sustainability challenges, Albury City's submission also seeks support from the New South Wales government to advocate to the federal government to restore the local government financial assistance grants to 1% of Commonwealth taxation revenue, to transition away from legislated minimum grant requirements, and to reinstate three-year indexation previously paused to support the sustainability of rural and regional communities based on greatest need. Thank you for the opportunity to present, and we welcome any questions from the committee.
Thank you. And thank you so much for hosting us here today as well. I'll now move to questions, looking to my colleagues. And Dr Amanda Conne, would you like to start?
Thank you. Thank you so much for hosting the committee here in Albury. My first question is about your suggestion about councils being able to raise revenue through the integrated planning and reporting framework rather than through the state government rate peg. That suggestion has been made by a number of councils, and it's also raised concerns from some stakeholders that in a cost of living crisis, you might end up with bill shock for households. So how do you see it working if the committee were to recommend removing the rate peg? How can you ensure that the community has input into the service level of a council and to avoid that bill shock?
Thank you for the question. So the process that we work through with the community in developing the Community's strategic plan is significant. It is looking at a 10-year-plus horizon. We engage with demographics across the community, so the very young, our young adults, you know, our sort of more middle-aged community members, and then our older community members. And what we seek to capture through that process is the aspirations and ambitions of our community. As always, that's got to be balanced with what's actually achievable. The difficulty we have at the moment is the rate peg doesn't give any consideration to the unique needs and aspirations of communities. We do go through an extensive, not only development process, but public exhibition process in regard to the development of the Community's strategic plan. And then when we build our four-year delivery programme and our budget, everything in that needs to be able to be directly correlated back to that Community's strategic plan. In terms of, you know, how do we ensure there's no bill shock? I think what's happening at the moment with the special variations is evidence of the fact that the current system is actually supporting, creating an environment where communities are subject to bill shock. If councils were able to better set their rates in line with community need, but recognising the financial circumstances of their respective communities, then we wouldn't have that significant situation, which, to be honest, has probably been in the making since 2010, when rate pegging was first introduced.
Albury is obviously part of a cross-border community. Are there particular recommendations that we should be looking at to the state government in terms of how to better take into account the needs of a cross-border community?
Relatively new, this is my first time on council, but I can certainly hear about some of those stories in putting in grant applications where there was a waiting applied historically in terms of whether, how many Victorians might benefit from whatever it is that we might be looking to develop. So I'm happy for Ms Squire to direct, I guess, historically what has taken place in our community in relation to that.
Thanks, Mayor King, and thanks for the question. Certainly, we had evidence and have had evidence in past years where, in applying for infrastructure investment funding, we became aware of the fact that our application was subject to significant discounting based on the calculation methodology that Treasury was using at the time. And as the mayor indicated, what that effectively did was sought to determine what the Victorian benefit of that infrastructure might be and to discount the merits or the benefit-cost ratio of our project to reflect that. Our understanding is that does still happen in terms of the methodology that's applied by Treasury. And whilst we can appreciate that New South Wales may not have an appetite for benefiting Victorian residents, as a border community, that puts us at significant disadvantage in comparison with other regional cities across New South Wales, because every infrastructure project that we submit for funding is subject to those same considerations. So certainly, we would welcome any recommendation from this committee in regard to eliminating that process of border discounting of infrastructure and any other funding applications that might be coming from border communities.
Thank you. One last question, if I may, Chair.
Please.
We've heard a lot through this inquiry about various innovative ways that councils have collaborated to create economies of scale or share expertise. I was hoping you could share with the committee Albury's experience with the half-waste project.
Well, as a current mayor, I'm extremely proud of those who've served before me in working really hard in this half-waste programme. We now are finding that, I recently did an interview on the project about a trial we did with black fly larvae being able to, I guess, reduce waste. And the Sydney were looking at applying that similar concept. So I think very much we've collaborated and led the way, but I'm happy for Ms Squire in terms of the historical context of that programme.
Thanks, Mayor King, and thanks for the question. So the half-waste initiative, we have a joint regional contract for allowed curbside collection services, which has, I think, eight councils involved in that now. But as part of that, we actually retain a percentage levy, which we invest into a regional half-waste education programme. So we have developed all the branding, all the intellectual property that supports that to build community understanding and awareness around how we reduce waste in our day-to-day living. As the mayor touched on, we've done a number of trials. I think our latest trial coming up or underway but about to be expanded is around soft plastics recycling and how we can eliminate those soft plastics from landfill in the future, I do want to acknowledge the state government is giving consideration to review of the waste levies that apply in metropolitan areas and some of the regional communities surrounding those. And we've, you know, we've made a submission along those lines. We don't need a levy applied by the state government. We believe we are leading the way in terms of our efforts to work collaboratively to reduce waste in our communities and how that waste is treated and wherever possible, to utilise that as a resource and support a circular economy across the region.
Thank you. And appreciate my last follow-up might need to be taken on notice. You've talked about the effectiveness of the programme, particularly given that we're looking at financial sustainability as there evidence of cost effectiveness of that programme.
Thank you for the question. Our waste management facility does deliver financial returns for council, including, you know, the fact that we are year-on-year reducing waste to landfill. So if you can get the operating model right and you can get the critical mass through regional collaboration, certainly, you know, waste management can be sustainable. But I think that is something that's very difficult to achieve for some communities where they don't have the benefit of that regional collaboration or potentially they don't have a regional waste facility where all of those waste streams are coming into one central point wherever practicable, so they can be reutilised.
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you.
The Honorable Scott Farlow?
Thank you very much. From the outset, thank you very much for hosting us in Aubrey. It's wonderful to be in your city and it's a beautiful city indeed. If I could start out by asking, back to those border issues, what's the comparison between the rates here in Aubrey compared to Wodonga across the other side of the Murray?
I couldn't tell you in exact dollar terms. Thank you for the question. But certainly, my understanding is that Wodonga, for example, the average rate per property is higher than what you would see in Aubrey. Victoria have only recently become subject to rate pegging. In previous years, they have averaged around, so Wodonga, our local council area, has averaged in the order of 7% per annum. So they've been able to historically determine their own rates.
So 7% per annum growth in their rates, okay.
Yep, yep. This was prior to the introduction of rate pegging and that would vary year-on-year. I'm not an expert on Wodonga council rates, but certainly have awareness of them. So yes, they've also got, they don't have, they apply a capital improved value calculation methodology. So the methodology is different. But as I said, historically, Victorian councils have had the benefit of being able to determine their own rates in consultation with their community, albeit that has changed in recent years.
Thank you. Now, other councils have advocated as well for a 2% increase effectively, that where you could go and have a 2% increase outside of the special rate variation process. Just interested in Aubrey City Council's views on that potential. And if you were to go down that path, what guardrails do you think there would need to be to ensure that councils didn't just jack it up by 2% every year?
Thank you for the question. Yes, we support the philosophy around councils having the opportunity to apply a slightly higher percentage to the rate peg, provided that they can demonstrate to the community that it's needed to fund community aspirations and ambitions. As we talked about at the outset, we worked through a comprehensive process in developing our budget each year and we must demonstrate to the community how those initiatives, activities, services align to the Community Strategic Plan. Our community is very active in providing feedback on the budget. You know, we can vary from, you know, 50 to over 100 submissions each year. Every single one of those submissions is considered by us and responded to individually. So I think if you, that in itself is a mechanism to ensure that the council of the day is listening to the community in terms of any considerations they might be making of applying, if it were available, a percentage increase above the rate peg. But I think that the Integrated Planning and Reporting Framework, it provides the guardrails and it's already in, it's already in place.
So just to segue from that, that was my next question. In terms of that approach that you would advocate as well, the Integrated Planning and Reporting Framework, how would you see that actually rolling out? What sort of role do you think there would be for the state government in coming back, for instance, and maybe marking councils' homework? What do you see that rolling out and looking like?
Well, effectively, thank you for the question, but effectively, the state government can do that quite easily right now. You know, all of our budget papers are public. Our response to community feedback in relation to budget submissions that we receive are presented formally back to council prior to the adoption of the budget. And then obviously, we have our current financial reporting requirements. So I would say those mechanisms are already in place. It's perhaps just the lens that the New South Wales Government might choose to apply to it.
Now, also in your submission, you talked about the model that had been used in terms of CPI, the change in the actual CPI that was in place, but also effectively that councils' basket of goods isn't necessarily the same as what the RBA looks at in terms of, I think you might have even mentioned the price of bitumen and the like, or the price of petrol, that for instance. If there was to be a basket of goods applied for local government, what do you think that should include?
Thank you for the question. I think the basket of goods actually needs to look at what are the costs that are impacting service delivery and asset renewal for councils. You know, that, it's all well and good to apply, as is now the case, to RBA CPI forecasts, but as we indicated in our submission, that doesn't give consideration to the dynamic changes that can happen from an economic perspective. Construction costs are forecast to rise more than 30% in the next 12 months by some, if you talk to the construction sector. But there are a whole raft of operational expenditure items that don't necessarily form part of that RBA CPI forecast. So we'd certainly encourage, if the New South Wales Government was contemplating making a change, think about the actual costs that councils are bearing as part of their day-to-day operations and set some benchmarking around those perhaps.
Thank you. Also, just turning to, how much do rates actually make up in terms of Aubrey City Council's revenue at the moment?
Thank you for the question. Rates and statutory charges are about 49% of our total revenue. Of that total revenue, about 60% roughly is ordinary rate revenue. So it is a significant proportion of our revenue.
And I've got to say, going, we've gone through a lot of councils, that's probably higher than a lot of others we've spoken with.
Yeah, yeah.
And in terms of grants, how important are they for Aubrey Council?
Thanks for the question. They are incredibly important. And whether they, you know, whether you're talking about the financial assistance grants, untied grants are particularly important to us in supporting our service delivery and recurrent expenditure. But we also recognise the value of infrastructure funding to support the creation of new assets and facilities for the community, whilst we absolutely welcome those and they are critical to our ability to deliver on the needs of a growing population and a population that's actually providing facilities and infrastructure for a regional community, which a city like Aubrey absolutely does. It comes with a lag cost to council by way of depreciation. And for those of you that may not be aware, our budget this financial year, we're looking at a $12.7 million budget deficit. $28 million of that is actually depreciation. We obviously need to be able to reinvest in our assets and maintain them so they continue to meet the needs of the community. But when you're a growing city like Aubrey and you need to build new infrastructure and assets, the residual impact of that is the depreciation expense that's then applied to your total budget.
And to that point, in terms of infrastructure grants, I think we've heard from some other councils today that the environment has become more competitive for those grants. Just wondering, from Aubrey's perspective, have you seen a drop in the number of grants that you've been able to apply for in the last 12 months? Or have you seen a more competitive landscape? What's the experience for Aubrey?
I know we've had, we're still following up on some of the grant applications that we were successful previously. So we've been very mindful of delivering on what we've already been able to achieve. We've been able to obtain some minor grants in terms of the process. I'm more than happy to refer to the executive team on their feedback in terms of that process.
Thanks, Maite King. I would say generally, yes, there has been a reduction in the grant funding that has been available. And we recognise the, I guess, the austerity that some levels of government are trying to apply to rectify the sort of post-COVID budget challenges. As the mayor mentioned, we have been very fortunate as a council and we have been successful in securing a wide range of grant funding and significant investment at that. We've only got a certain amount of capacity to deliver. And as I mentioned, we're also cognisant of the fact that there comes a residual cost with those new facilities and infrastructure by way of not only depreciation, but also operating cost and expenditure. So yes, you know, potentially have seen a slight reduction in the number and availability of grants. So therefore, they are more competitive. But we have been very successful in the past and, to be honest, have had our work cut out just delivering on grant funding that we have attracted over recent years in the past 12 months.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Thanks. I wanted to pick up on the point you made earlier about depreciation. We heard certainly earlier today from other witnesses about the impact of depreciation. In terms of the revaluing process as it currently stands, do you have any views around that? And how, if anything, we could change to assist councils in that process better?
Thank you for the question, Madam Chair. Certainly, it's an area where we are giving due consideration. We've developed a Financial Sustainability Improvement Plan, which has been endorsed by council. And one of the things we are looking at is the methodology that's applied to depreciation. And historically, have applied a straight-line methodology where the reality is assets perform for an extended period of time, often with minimal levels of renewal investment. So yes, giving consideration to the genuine asset life and the capacity of that asset to serve the community, rather than looking at a straight-line methodology, is an opportunity. So I think it is, it is something that the New South Wales Government could give consideration to and ensure that that asset depreciation methodology is realistic and actually reflects the condition of the asset, as opposed to simply being accounting methodology.
And should it be the case that the state government should set expectations around that or leave it for individual councils to tailor to their communities better?
Thank you. It's a very good question. I think that for, it is probably something that councils have a better insight and awareness of in terms of how their assets are being utilised by the community and what their life might be. If the New South Wales Government were going to, were going to provide guidance around that, that could be useful. But I think as part of that process, it would be important to allow some flexibility for councils to justify the conditions that might apply to their particular community.
And is it the case that you think the process at the moment is that you're having to revalue assets more frequently than is needed or it is too frequent? We heard earlier today that the five years is perhaps, it should perhaps be a longer cycle.
Thanks for the question. I think particularly for those assets that have a long life. You know, if you're talking road assets, for example, renewing those every five years, you know, maybe it may be beneficial to extend that out for a further period of time, yes.
Thank you. In terms of, you mentioned Wodonga and their rating levels and the fact that they use a capital improved value system. I'd be interested to hear your views on the, on the capital improved value system. It's something we have heard about throughout the inquiry about, you know, our unimproved system versus capital improved, whether that would have any advantages, you think, for Aubrey?
Thanks for the question. I know in our considerations and the various submissions we've made to government over time, both have their benefits and disadvantages. And not necessarily just in regional areas, but particularly in metropolitan areas. I think capital improved value can be increasingly complex. Whether or not the basis of ordinary rates, does it really matter whether it's land value or capital improved value? Is it actually about the methodology and the cost factors that go into the whole analysis around what the increase should be? So I'm happy to take that on notice, Madam Chair, and provide some further information from our team in regard to that one, if that's okay.
That'd be great. Thank you. In terms of procurement now, I was interested in getting your thoughts on how procurement is currently being done by the local council and if there are, if there is anything that, you know, perhaps the state government could do to improve that, given, you know, procurement and local costs are such a big expense for council, is there a role for the state government to play in assisting or improving councils in the way they procure services?
Thank you for the question. I think, I mean, at this point in time, the process for procurement is fairly well set out. We potentially are in a better position than some rural and regional communities in that we have a solid network of providers that are able to compete for projects, services, initiatives in our community. The process that we apply is open and transparent. We still publicly present all our tender reports and they are available to the community to view. We certainly use panels where that's beneficial from a financial sustainability point of view. So I think at this point in time, there wouldn't necessarily be anything specifically. You know, whatever the New South Wales Government can do to boost competitiveness and stimulate economic activity in the regions will be reflected, I think, in the sort of pricing that we see. The other, the other consideration, and we have raised this previously before and it's probably not directly related to procurement, but more related to the timing and delivery and forward planning that the government applies to major infrastructure investment, which is always welcome in the region. But certainly, if you look at this region and the projects that are happening with the hydro upgrade, the transgrid upgrade, we've got the Department of Defence investing $1.5 billion in its facilities in the region, combined with all the capital projects that the councils themselves have. What we do find is when there is significant infrastructure investment by New South Wales Government, often that can create challenges in terms of actually achieving, you know, great pricing. But as I said, we're very, very supportive of the investment. But sometimes it's around thinking around the timing and the capacity of a region to absorb and deliver a wide range of major infrastructure projects concurrently.
So is there, there is a better, there is a need for better infrastructure coordination?
Yes.
Is sort of what I'm hearing. And is council best placed to help or assist in, in that coordination, would you say? Or is it a regional organisation that could also have that role?
Oh, look, I think, yes, it could be councils. It could be joint organisations, which obviously have then that perspective of all of the initiatives that might be happening across the region, noting that a lot of time, it's actually state and federal government, major infrastructure projects, where we see a bit of a clash. So I think it's all levels of government collaborating.
Thank you. I'll now throw to my colleague, the Honourable Stephen Lawrence online, who's got a question.
Thank you, Chair. Just a question for Ms Squire, if I could.
Stephen, we'll just see if we can fix that at this end. Are you on mute?
No, I'm not muted. That's why I'm involuntarily muted.
I can hear Stephen at my end.
Pete, well.
Pete is saying that he can hear me.
Apologies. We'll just try and address that at this end in the interim. I might just continue on with a further question, if that's all right, just while we're making sure that Stephen can ask his question. We've heard from a, from a previous council in this inquiry that the cost of, of construction of delivering a service would be upwards of a million. delivering a service would be upwards of a million dollars more, this was a metro council, if council delivered the project themselves rather than a private contractor. Is that your experience in Albury?
Thanks for the question. I think it depends on the project and perhaps it's different for organisations like Regional Cities or Albury City. If there was a major construction project, we would absolutely be putting it to market. We wouldn't have the skills and capabilities to deliver that in-house. When it comes to minor projects and capital works, often we do deliver those in-house where it presents value for money. But that's generally a judgement call that we make at the commencement of the budget planning process and as part of our, whether it's our feasibility analysis or preliminary design and project planning.
Thank you. Just a pass to Stephen Lawrence again online. Stephen?
How about that? I'll try again. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Just a question for Miss Squire. I'm just interested in your thoughts, Miss Squire, on what a significant increase in rates might mean for housing affordability in Albury, particularly for renters in the context of the current market conditions.
Thank you for the question. Well, I would anticipate that any landlord is going to pass on any holding costs associated with their property direct to tenants. One of the challenges we have in Albury at the moment is our residential vacancy rate is 1.5%. So we do not have sufficient residential housing rental stock available to meet current demand. So yes, certainly, all rental, as I said, you know, landlords will pass on those on costs to renters. And as long as their expenditure is going up, then rent will continue to rise. But, you know, like everything, if the community has services and infrastructure that it requires to make sure that the community is livable, that it's safe, that it's meeting community needs, that it's a cohesive community and that it's vibrant and dynamic, then ultimately there is a cost to be borne by everybody in the community.
Squire?
Thank you. Just looking to my colleagues to see if you had any further questions. Wonderful. I might continue on, if that's all right, just with a couple more questions now about statutory fees and charges. We've heard through the inquiry about the impact of some of those statutory fees and charges having not been indexed. Would... Do you at the moment, do you currently identify through your annual reporting what those amounts are for those statutory fees and charges?
Thanks for the question. Yes, all our fees and charges are included in our fee and charge schedules for the community and we clearly articulate whether they are a statutory charge or not. And I might use development applications as an example. So the statutory fees and charges, the revenue we generate from those for development applications is around $600,000 per year. The cost of delivering that service is actually $3 million a year. So statutory fees and charges are not keeping up with the cost of delivering service. And in many cases, you know, there are not necessarily opportunities for us to collect revenue above those minimum charges.
And why is that discrepancy so large in terms of the cost versus, you know, the fees that you're collecting and the actual cost?
Yeah, thanks for the question. I would anticipate, obviously, I can't be sure, but I would anticipate it's as a result of the fact that some of those charges have not been indexed in line with inflation. But perhaps it's also that fundamentally they don't give consideration to the actual cost of providing the service, rather are based on what is considered by the New South Wales Government to be a reasonable cost. And particularly from a planning perspective, I'm sure that you've heard through your journey that in rural and regional communities, planners are very difficult, as are building surveyors, to secure, to ensure that we continue to deliver that service. So just the cost of employing those officers, the rate of that is increasing all of the time. But we cannot deliver the service without appropriately skilled and qualified people. So it is part of the cost factor.
Thank you. In terms of the skilled staff, and we have heard, you know, about this, particularly, obviously particularly more acutely in regional areas, but it is, you know, safe to say an issue that's felt across the board. Is there work that council is doing at the moment with regards to traineeships or anything like that? And is there a greater role that that could play in terms of trying to address that issue, perhaps in the medium term?
Yeah, well, I guess in terms of our human resources, I'm happy for Miss Squire to direct that, but there's definitely opportunities for growing your own is something that they've always been very proud of and giving opportunities for, I guess, employees to maybe look to sidestep into directions that they may not have considered in terms of a career. So that's certainly something that I'm aware that we're doing, but happy to be supported further by Miss Squire.
Thanks, Mary King. We have had a goal, a target for many years, to have 10% of our total workforce as Grow Our Own. So whether they're trainees, apprentices, graduates, and we have consistently sought to deliver on that. And that has returned significant investment to us as an organisation over time. Many of the people that started with us as trainees or graduates or apprentices are now managers, leaders and specialists that add significant value to our organisation, but who have also then left Albury City to go and contribute to other local government areas with their expertise. So it's not something that's new to us and certainly we will continue to grow our aspirations in that regard. What is important is that you've actually got the skills and expertise in your organisation to support those trainees, apprenticeships and graduates so that they can have appropriate mentoring and guidance as they go through their career journey to set them up for success. So again, another area of focus for us, but yeah, absolutely a priority for our organisation.
You mentioned you've got a target of 10%. What is the actual, that you are finding you're reaching or is it, you know, close to that number? Should it be more?
Thanks for the question. Certainly the number of full-time equivalent positions in our organisations. So we have achieved the 10% in terms of approved positions. We have got a number of vacancies and I'd have to take on notice exactly how many of those trainee or Grow Our Own programme positions might be vacant at the moment. But it is cyclical and it also depends on the support mechanism, so the education programmes that are available. But generally, we achieve that 10%. And as I said, it's something that we will be looking to grow in time to come.
And if I could also add, it's that compounding problem in terms of the remuneration that local government is quite limited in. In fact, we've lost some key personnel to state government, for example, industries in certainly in Albury. There is a presence here, so that has been an issue in the private sector to are able to offer that remuneration. So while we continue to promote the benefits of local government and really working in partnership in delivering these benefits for your community, it's clear that, you know, we're not always able to compete on a remuneration basis for some of these highly sought-after skills that we need.
And how often, how long, sorry, how long have you had that target of 10%? And have you tried going higher or...?
Thanks for the question. And I'm sort of recalling this off the top of my head, but I would expect probably since about 2006. So it's been a longstanding position of Albury City to work towards that 10% or to sustain the 10% figure.
Thank you. No final questions from my colleagues. Do you have any final remarks that you wish to make or clarifications at all?
Just a thank you for your interest and great questions and you've got us all thinking further. So it's great to take some of those questions on notice to be able to give some more vital information that might help the committee form some of its recommendations.
Thank you. Thanks so much for making time to give evidence today and again for hosting us in your wonderful city. The committee secretariat will be in touch with you with regards to the questions that you have taken on notice for their response. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much to our next lot of witnesses and welcome. Thank you for making the time to give evidence to the inquiry today. If I could ask each witness, starting on my left with Mr Butler, to please state their name, position, title, and swear either the oath or the affirmation.
Adrian Butler, General Manager, Federation Council. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. My name's Patrick Burke, Mayor of Federation Council. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. My name is Greg Verden. I'm the Mayor of Lockhartshire. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Peter Venneris, General Manager, Lockhartshire Council. And I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. I'd now like to invite you to make a short opening statement, if you would like to proceed, perhaps. Federation first, then Lockhart.
Thank you. And if it's not short enough, just pull me up.
Oh.
On behalf of Federation Council, I'd like to thank the committee for the opportunity to speak to you today, and thank the New South Wales Government for initiating this inquiry. I speak on behalf of Federation Council, noting council has made a formal submission to the inquiry. I speak as one of the only elected Mayor of Federation Council since its formation as a result of forced mergers of many councils in May 2016, with Federation being the amalgamation of Yarra and Corral councils. I am now in my seventh continuous year as Mayor. Whilst I speak on behalf of Federation Council, I also bring my experience and knowledge from being Mayor of Yarra and Shire Council for two terms prior to the merger, and councillor of that council for many years prior to that. I also speak the experience of my knowledge gained from my current role as Executive Member of Country Mayor's Association, New South Wales, and as Chair of the very successful Riverina Murray Joint Organisation, Ramjo. We need real and structural and immediate changes to the way local government is financed, so we can continue to be a respected tier of government. Councils have proven over hundreds of years that they can maintain and improve their infrastructure in their communities, but have been dragged down by the continued weight of things like rate pegging since the late 1970s, I believe, never-ending cost shifting, increased government requirements and regulation, example, increased order costs, ARI committees, et cetera, some of which are welcome but come at a cost. Ignoring depreciation, by that I mean underfunding assets maintenance that leads to the assets failing or requiring significant extra money to be repaired that would normally have been with proper maintenance, example, resealing bitumen roads or re-sheeting gravel roads before the subsurfaces fail. Significant unproceeded changes in funding, example, when governments change, state and federal, and grant programmes change, stop, pause, or rebranded to suit the focus of the new government and then meet their financial challenges. As the only level of government that does not have the ability to adjust its own taxes, our rates, it is little wonder why things have got where they are today, due to many factors, causing factors, with one of the major ones being rate pegging. I urge the committee to recommend to the government, so that we can urge the government to have the courage to adopt a recommendation to remove rate pegging and entrust councils to work with their communities within the IPNR framework to deliver the services that they value. Councils are fed up with having the state government buy rate pegging through irrelevant CPI increases awarded by IPART each year that do not reflect council's actual cost, having to do more with less when it's not possible and our communities suffer by failed assets. And we are also not accepting continued reviews of rate pegging and minor changes made here and there, that is just a tinker around the edges, as they are like moving deck chairs on the Titanic. This council now has the strategic financial maturity to improve on the years of underfunding, and it's doing so despite facing obvious community concern, given the cost of living pressures and the extent to which council has to raise rates to maintain its assets and deliver services, many of which are mandatory. Despite significant unresolved issues around the loss of representation of councillors from the former Yarra area, Federation Council has made a very successful start as a new council. It's a pity it takes such a significant special rate variation to turn the structural problems with the budget around by this council and the previous one. Do not make easy decisions. We want to make the right ones for the long term, even if they are not popular. Federation Council is in the midst of applying a significant SRV for implementation on July 1 next year. Whilst work is now underway on preparing the application, the precise percentage of the new council, if they support it, will apply for, is not yet finalised. But our modelling and earlier temporary approval granted and implemented in July 2023 suggest it will be in the order of 60-70% cumulative, depending on the community consultation, further asset management and financial work, and capacity to pay. Our current adopted long-term financial plan has a scenario modelling delivering current services with minor service reductions and renewing assets in accordance with council strategic asset management plan, requiring a cumulative 80% increase to general rates over two years. This is 50% in 2025-26, effective including the temporary 19 and 17 SRV increases we've applied in 23 and 24, and a further 20% in 26-27. But even this will still not allow us to meet all the financial ratios. Separate to the SRV, council commissioned an independent that was undertaken across the latter half of 2023 and is now publicly available, summarising the terms of reference they were, to review if the merger saving proposed by the government in their proposal of Lockhart, Yarra and Corowa versus the adopted proposals of Corowa, of Corow and Yarra were achievable. What were the advantages and disadvantages? Whether the matters required to be considered under Local Government Act, such as representation, were poorly considered and considered any other matters? Not surprisingly, the peer-reviewed support found the savings were never there. It is around 11% more expensive to run the council and is running very efficiently and in the main been run well. This work has been done thoroughly by three professors, two overseas that are widely acknowledged leaders in the field. We definitely see the benefit in precise, independent, robust work, as do most of the community. The review produced 77 recommendations, many of which have been adopted by council and are being worked through, and of course, focus on improving council's financial sustainability in the longer term. Council needs proper change to ensure things are improved, and for the merged councils, there appears to be a strong case for some compensation also. Whilst financial assistance grants are granted by the federal government and councils across Australia are united in the push for federal government to increase these to 1% of the total tax revenue. The states, through the Grants Commission processes, determine the allocation across each council. All rural councils need financial assistance grants that respond properly to horizontal physical equalisation, not the current process, and redistribution process needs to occur to look at councils in most, such that those large assets based in low populations yet produce much more of the product that helps both state and federal governments make their money each year. Council needs certainly that the state government will commit 60% funding, at least, of major capital works such as water and sewer, so we can continue to play our part in unlocking housing supply. I also urge the committee to look, not only themselves, but at one of the recommendations requiring all policymakers to take note of scholarly work. After all, they were absolutely spot on back in 2015, and the government of the day had listened, there would have all have been saved significant grief. The work of Professor Drew in 2015 and since is particularly notable. Thank you for allowing me to address, and I'm happy to take questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We've done Lockhart now. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before the Standing Committee and to give evidence to the committee's inquiry on the ability of local government to fund infrastructure and services. It's not my intention to simply read our written submission or to repeat everything that was in it, however, I will take the opportunity to emphasise some key points. Local government has evolved over a long period of time, well beyond the early days, when it was primarily concerned with providing property-related services, e.g., road access, drainage, waste collection, et cetera, which justified a property-based tax as the main source of revenue. Local government's evolution into a non-property-based services such as public libraries, parks and gardens, public swimming pools, sporting grounds and the like, means that people who do not own property and therefore do not pay rates now benefit from a wide range of services provided by local councils. Society is much more mobile than it was 100 years ago or even 50 years ago. Today, we do not necessarily live in and pay rates to the same local government area in which we work, or play our sport, or do our shopping, or spend our vacations. That means, from time to time, we are all using local government services in local government areas in which we do not own property and therefore do not make a contribution towards the provision of these services. This reinforces the importance of councils receiving a share of Commonwealth revenue so that through our income taxes, we all make a contribution to local government services, whether we are rate payers in a particular local government area or not. For the reasons I have outlined, we believe funding of local government needs to be strengthened, and this is particularly the case for rural councils, because, one, rural councils do not have the same opportunities to generate our own source revenue, as for example, inner-city councils. Two, rural councils do not have the same opportunity to achieve the economies of scale that come from population density. And three, it is in rural councils where there is more likely to be a market failure and the withdrawal of certain services, with the local council always being the one who the community turns to to fix the problem. It is also, for the reasons I have outlined, that council has an issue with one of the six performance measures that are contained in the audited financial statements of all councils, and that is the one that focuses on own-source revenue, with the benchmark being 60%. For the record, Lockhartshire consistently meets all of the industry benchmarks except for own-source revenue. To set the benchmark at 60% is totally unrealistic for rural councils, and having the same benchmark for rural as well as metropolitan and even regional city councils is difficult to understand. With respect to the rate peg, Lockhartshire Council has welcomed the recent changes to the rate peg methodology, following a review by IPART. As a growing local government area, we have benefited from the revised methodology, which incorporates population growth and other factors, which has moved the methodology away from the one-size-fits-all approach, with a single rate peg applying to all councils in the state, to a more customised approach. However, having regard to the specific terms of reference, as to whether past rate pegs have matched increases in costs borne by local governments, Lockhart respectfully submits that it's not the case. A particular concern to council was the ironical situation that in the past, the additional revenue generated by the rate peg was swallowed up just by the increases in fees and charges imposed by agencies of the same level of government that was limiting increases in council's rate income. In concluding my remarks and in reinforcing the point that funding of local government needs to be strengthened, I would like to suggest that I believe there needs to be a change in the mindset. By this I mean that rural councils with limited capacity to generate own-source revenue and having more than 50% or 60% of the revenue coming from grants and subsidies should not simply be viewed as unviable councils being propped up by other levels of government. The flow of financial assistance from the Commonwealth to the states and to local governments should instead be viewed as good policy in order to have some fairness and equity in how we pay for local government services. This is because the role of local government is expanding and now providing non-property-related services, and because we are now a much more mobile society and using local government services on a daily basis in areas which we do not live or own property. In fact, it should not only be considered as good policy but essential policy if our system of federation is going to work, because, as we know, the way our constitutional arrangements have evolved means that the Commonwealth has most of the tax-raising powers, while states and local governments have most of the expenditure functions and service obligations. I understand that this inquiry is being undertaken by a Standing Committee of the New South Wales Legislative Council, and I have made numerous references to Commonwealth funding. However, I believe that to review local government's ability to fund infrastructure and services, or more importantly, to ensure that local government does have the ability to fund infrastructure and services, one must consider the financial relationship between all three levels of government. Whereas in the past, the focus was on boundary reform and amalgamations, it is respectfully submitted that it is the intergovernmental financial relationships where the focus should lie. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to make a contribution to this inquiry.
Thank you. I will now move to questions, looking to committee members. The honourable Sam Faraway.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for appearing today. Good to see some of you again who I haven't seen in a little while. I want to go to the heart of what regional and smaller and more rural councils face, and that is the distribution of funds from government and the equity in that. So firstly, as a former roads minister, I'm going to start with roads, because it's one of the three Rs that councils look at, and I want to know, what sort of funding model, in your view, should state government, irrespective of politics, be looking at to make sure that there's equity in road funding? And I would highlight what the former coalition government put in place with road funding based on size of road network, which the new government have picked up in the early part of their term, but is this something that should be permanent moving forward? That all new road funding coming from state government should be dispersed to councils based on size of road network?
Well, I think firstly, acknowledge that council has, our council has just received a significant boost into our roads funding, and that is to be greatly welcome. I think the cost of maintaining all this infrastructure is really one of the big issues, and even improving the infrastructure is one of the big issues. So what you're suggesting, I think, would be very welcome by most rural councils especially, because in our case, we have some 1,500 kilometres of roads that we need to maintain with a very small rate base, so we rely heavily on grants and government contributions. So, yes, I would support that.
And great to see you too, again, Sam. I think primarily, yes, but I see a lot of factors involved in that, and that would be, we've got 2,000 kilometres of road, wet years, so therefore you need more funding in those particular times, wet years. The GDP that's produced in the areas, whether wheat crops and what is produced, so whatever's produced there equates to the condition of the road, the quality of the road, so there's money going back into that area that is producing GDP for state or Australia. So I do take your point on road length, but there's a lot of road lengths where the country's not as fertile or self-producing, so I think there are other factors that would come into play there. Thank you.
So I suppose my point is to both gentlemen, is it's how government disperse funds is the point to my question, because what I'm seeing, and I think that has come from evidence throughout the inquiry, is that governments think they're clever by putting BCRs on everything, but in actual fact, in rural communities, in particular unsealed roads, were up until this funding programme was put in place, you know, you had bucklies of getting road funding from state government to grade roads. My point is, one, about the equity in dispersing government funds. If government have $300 million on the table, what is the most equitable way to disperse those funds? And it shouldn't be, in my view, and this is what I'd love your feedback on, it shouldn't be a beauty contest. It shouldn't be federation versus Lockhart on who has a better BCR. Would you agree that BCRs for rural councils for roads really shouldn't be the hard and fast rule for funding?
Yes, I would.
Thank you, Mr Faraway and Chair, and thank you for the opportunity to address the hearing as well. So, yeah, certainly, I'll take that point. It's too long that councils have had to scramble for competitive road funding grants, in addition to obviously the recurrent funding, so I think that's just a no-brainer. I think that'd be a great move forward if there was more allocation on a per-k basis. Your Yarra and Shire Council days, I think, were very, I think, fortunate, but through a lot of work, a lot of hours of staff time putting in for those fixing country road grants, so the Freightlink, Bore Creek, Oaklands, I know Lockhart, similar, they've got significant grain, you know, silos and bunkers that are around the place, but they're not always going to get up on a BCR. But our council and I think many others have followed suit. We have opened up basically all our roads to B-doubles, triples, you name it, road trains, because we're unlocking the productivity efficiencies there. Farmers are telling us now that they're not getting queued up at silos anymore because they're more and more got the bigger trucks coming through. The ability to then be strategic, I think councils like through Ramjo, through ReRock, or the JO, I should say, Riverina, have got ability to be strategic in that funding, so they can still do it per-k basis. There's still been assessment to say if, you know, those kilometres went to that road between us and Wagga, or us and Oaklands, or Mawila, it would still make sense across the LGA boundaries. We've got freight plans we've worked on through our JOs, so really important. And just to finish on that, I think in addition to that, we really hurt when we don't get the increases to the block grant, the repair programmes, as in the CPI or better. So we get block amounts, you know, councillor Verden has mentioned the R2R, the federal stuff being increased, and we hope that promise comes through, but we also just need to be keeping up with the rising cost of diesel and aggregate and things like that. And the last point, sorry, was about the regional roads, that significant amount of regional roads council took back on and have been sort of hamstrung by that funding being pretty static.
So a couple of follow-up questions, if I could, to any of you gentlemen on the panel. One, do we think road block grants should be reviewed in terms of the methodology? And it's my understanding that those road block grants haven't been reviewed for a couple of years now, and lots has changed in that time. That's my first question. Should they be reviewed? I'm happy for anyone to answer that question. The second question that I have for anyone on the panel is betterment funding. And obviously, every council, and I suspect Federation and Lockhart, have had their fair share of weather events, natural disasters, roads crumbling. Do you think that the federal and state governments should be doing more to review the disaster recovery funding arrangements and to include more betterment specifically for road repairs, so we don't keep going back repairing the same roads with the same aggregate and same materials, when in actual fact, if we spent a little bit more on things like drainage, culverts, a little bit of road raising, we would actually build resilience into that infrastructure to withstand more weather events more often, which is a better use of taxpayer funds? So anyone on the panel, happy to...
Well, I think that would be essential, given, as councillor Burke has and Adrian have pointed out, the advent of B-doubles, B-triples, and all these larger vehicles now utilising our roads, if we're only repairing to the same standards, they're going to continue to crumble because of the increased traffic, tonnages, and et cetera, that's on them. So I think it's important that there has to be a betterment element added into that road funding to allow us to build the roads that will sustain that type of traffic. And so, yeah, that has always been an issue, as to say, we're only repairing to what was already there, you know, it was only a, you know, a four or five metre wide road, you know, how do cars or trucks pass on those roads safely and whatever? So we need to have that capacity to improve those roads.
Yeah, if I could just make a comment on the disaster funding and such, it's not a waste of disasters that create the havoc on our roads. We've had five great seasons, good rainfall, that's been fantastic for production, but chaotic for repairing roads. They just don't seem to, they don't line up, and it's because the way the roads are built many, many years ago. But so, I just want to make the point, it doesn't take a disaster to wreck our roads, just good seasons will do that.
And I suppose in... And I suppose in trying to secure road funding, it's very hard for local council to predict how good of the season is going to be to calculate the economic output of a region into your submission two years before the season actually is a bumper crop. So I suppose that is the point you're making, isn't it?
It is the point I'm making, yes.
We need to be looking more holistically at overall averaged output if you're going to be looking at a return.
And our Two Shires being the largest grain-growing and receivable areas in the state has to come into play.
Another question, does anyone else want to make a comment before I move on?
If I could just make a couple of comments, I just really wanted to say, referencing back to the comment that funding shouldn't be a beauty contest, just wanted to say, agree with that 100%. And whilst the question was probably more around road funding, I'd suggest that should be the case, you know, in other areas as well. And one thing we've welcomed in recent years was the approach taken, say, with Stronger Country Communities Fund, where instead of finding ourselves, instead of having to compete with other local government areas, there would be a notional amount given to an LGA, and provided you were able to submit projects that aligned with the government's criteria for that funding programme, we weren't competing, you know, in a beauty contest, so to speak. So I just wanted to make the point that I agree with the comment and even taking it beyond just road funding.
You just pinched my next question. But I will touch on for the other panel members if they want to contribute. And that is, again, about the point I've raised throughout this hearing across the state, and that is equity. Irrespective of who is on government benches, how do we return or deliver, how does a government return equity to rural communities? And it has to be in the way it disperses the funds. So I would like to know, have Lockhart or federation seen a reduction in grants that you've been able to apply for? And also grants you've been able to secure in particular in the last 12 months?
Happy to take that one as a start. Absolutely, there's been a freeze, which I guess not uncommon when state and federal governments change over. So in a sense, we're caught in a jam of both levels of government in terms of freezing some of the federal growing region-type funding, the state, the stronger country community funding, the federal government, the LRCIs, all been paused. And we get all levels of government got budgets to balance, but they still make a certain amount every year and they still spend a certain amount, so that's where they spend it. Absolutely, I think that's been an issue. And I just was hoping to just quickly track back on to that betterment funding. But we are right in the jam of, and I get, you know, the people in state government especially have got to work within the constraints, in the offices, but we literally got a stretch of road, 10, 20 metres long, and we've got potholes that will be funded under flood damage and the next one won't because of the existing impairment. Our staff are literally having to juggle, working with the agency, of course, so it's all done, you know, correct. But working out how to patch a bit of road here out that door and how to allocate funding, which is quite, you know, ridiculous. So going for that betterment approach, not just to put a bigger culvert in, but even how we treat damaged road, pre-event condition versus the current event. We know there's got to be a better way to dilute that.
It's very practical measures, isn't it? It's culverts, it's road raising, it's drainage. And I suppose, do you see, you know, from your experience, it doesn't meet community expectation or ratepayers' expectation that you replace the same culvert with the same culvert? Is that fair to say, especially to councillor Burke's point around freight and economic output? Is that you're just sheerly not keeping pace, not only with the economic output of your region, but there's no resilience being built into the infrastructure long-term, which essentially comes back to council's issue, doesn't it, whenever you get the next rain event?
Yeah, 100%, there's a corner right near Rand, down on the greater him, edge of our boundary, where the road's been redone under a flood damage claim. There was never a culvert under it. The farmers have rang up and said, why wouldn't you be putting a culvert under there? Because the farmer's changed the grade of his paddocks, and now it's just going to blow out again. The answer is, oh, well, it can't be funded, we can't do betterment. And we didn't have the other funding to do, and we wouldn't be talking about a 300, it'd be probably a 600 culvert. So it just doesn't make anyone look any good when that happens.
And again, I would say, I'd like to ask if Lockhart or federation, have you experienced as a local government cash flow issues because of the very clunky DRFA process? Which, just for your information, most councils have expressed frustration at it with all the hearings we've held to date. So I'm just interested if you have, in particular in the road space, encountered significant cash flow issues from transport for New South Wales because the system is pretty clunky?
Yeah, well, we're managing cash flow, and we appreciate the advance payments, and I'll throw over to Peter. But we also still haven't got our final claim across three or four claims. So we're still, you know, we could be looking at 12 to 15 million, but we still haven't. And, you know, we've gone through another harvest already, so we're going through another one at the end of this year, so.
Yeah, look, I'm aware it has been a bit of a statewide issue. We haven't had a major problem with, from a cash flow point of view. But while I've got the opportunity, I'll again say, certainly support the philosophy of, you know, betterment funding. And I think all levels of government, I suppose, because of the budget cycle, we can fall into the trap of short-term planning, and I think betterment funding is all about planning for the long term. So it should be supported.
My last question before the chair, we'll take the microphone off me. How do both your councils manage, and it's a question I've, just for pretext, that I've asked other councils in the hearings, how do you manage ratepayer and community expectation when you don't have the ability to secure some of the small infrastructure grants, like through Stronger Country Communities Fund, where it might have been for a small skate park, or to upgrade female change rooms at the footy club, or local toilet block? The stuff that I suppose councils don't necessarily budget for. You can manage a depreciation on a toilet block, but how do you manage the expectation that if you're unable to secure those grants after the last few years of having those grants available, how do you message and manage those expectations with the community?
Well, I've got to say that from Lockhart's perspective, through the local roads and community infrastructure and the stronger country communities, we have reduced a significant backlog of community expectations on what was required. And I would say that there isn't a sports ground, or a swimming pool, or a community facility that we haven't upgraded under those grants, and they were fantastic. But there was also a realisation that, you know, COVID unlocked a lot of money, but that couldn't continue also. That there may have had to have been some belt tightening in that respect, and I think that was not unexpected. But to say that the stronger country community grants certainly allowed us to give more back to the community through our community strategic plan or whatever that the communities did want. But I've got to say that I think we have satisfied the majority of those concerns with the grants that did come our way. And but I'm sure other ones will come up. Our biggest cost, our biggest issue, I think, is all these new shiny toys that we've been able to do is, they've got to be maintained. And that's going to be the next challenge for the local government is maintaining all these facilities.
You must have a good local member, get you all those grants.
Yeah, we have. I'll vouch for that. But it's a tough gig, Sam, because you've got to look at, you know, the communities have all their wishes and some are mandatory, such as dog parks, et cetera. We can't fly by the seat of our pants. If it's not in the budget, it's not on. So we have to guide the community through the processes of trying to achieve grants for different outcomes. And look, there'd be a lot of times that you would like to be able to help communities such as the Corral Rotherglane Football Club that was flooded. But you're pretty much tied within the boundaries of grants and insurances. So there's just not that spare cash there to do that. And we have to take a, we have to be strong as a council and stick to our budgets, hard and fast.
Just very quickly, do Lockhart or federation councils have enough resources to have a dedicated grants officer? We've heard from some larger councils like Albury and Wagga that they have their own dedicated grants officer. But do you have the resources as smaller councils compared to those city-based councils to have a dedicated grants officer?
I think I'd say we don't. No, we don't have that capacity. You know, there is certainly other staff positions we'd like to fill.
Before that, yeah.
And just for the record, federation doesn't either. We went through a period, early days of merger, with some grants officer and some other areas in economic development. But again, as the mayor just alluded to, everything has to get cut right back now to what is, you know, when you're going through a special rate variation, there's no better way of having the community examine every aspect of your operations. And we don't have a grants officer, and I think that goes back to that thing about there shouldn't be as many competitive grants either, because that's the challenge, isn't it?
Thanks. Now, move to Dr Madeline.
Thanks so much for coming to Albury today. My first question is for councillor Burke. I'm particularly interested in your experience as mayor of a council that was forcibly amalgamated in 2016. And I understand that the previous government offered some financial compensation at that time to cover the immediate costs associated with the amalgamation. At this point in time, should the committee be considering recommendations around the unique circumstance of councils that were forcibly amalgamated? Is the amalgamation still having an impact on your budget?
Oh, absolutely. And I was deeply saddened, I have to say it at the Alga Conference just recently with Charlie Sheen, who has fought for his community for many, many years, being allowed, given the permission to demerge, and can't do it. There's no legal tools to do it. There's no funding behind it. Councils like Yirana and Corral councils at the time of the merger, both communities were against the merger. They didn't want to merge. And I suppose, looking back, we've created a lot of inefficiencies. I look at Yirana-Shire council where there was approximately 30 outdoor staff, that's down to eight. Indoor staff down to a couple, you know, from 10 or 11. So it is dying, and it is a case from the merger. The efficiencies haven't been there, and they couldn't be there because of the distance. We had, Yirana-Shire had general manager, finance department, and what's the other one? Our planning and engineering. We don't have any of those. We have one of the staffers from Corral come down once a week. So it really has affected the community and the economy, and it's affected the cost of running the council. I will say that, though, when we were merged, we did take the attitude that, here we are now, we've got to make the best of this in the situation we are. So that's what we've tried to do. And I believe that federation council staff and councillors have done a very good job of that, and will continue to do that. But do we, is there any help for us? I mean, you know, we didn't, no one asked for it. It was forced. It was against everyone's will. Our biggest issue is, I come from a community or a council of 1,200 people. I went into a council of 12,000, nearly 13,000 people. I was the mayor of, previous mayor of Yirana-Shire council, so I was known, and I fluked getting mayor of federation council. But where's our future? And it's very, very clear to myself and the other councillors, we talk about it, we've got great council, good relationship, we talk about. It's too far. It's too inconvenient. Where's our future? Where's our representation? How do we hold that community? Like, we have, anyone that knows the old Yirana-Shire council, a lot of towns in New South Wales have died. We haven't. We've got water, we've got leisure, we've got tourists coming each weekend, but it's the community are fighting to keep that. We do need help, yes. And I think there should be some form of conversation or thought. Give us some representation for the future and we'll be happy, we'll go away and just live on and make it the best we can. That's what we want. We want representation. We were told at the time by the Minister of the Day that we would have a guaranteed three-on-council by proclamation. If that can happen, make it happen. It just needs to happen, and we will stop annoying anyone and get on with the job. Thank you.
I also had one question for councillor Verden. And this morning, your general manager was speaking on behalf of the regional organisation of councils and brought up the leadership that your council has shown on early childhood education in filling a gap that's been left by the private sector. And the question that I couldn't ask the general manager, but I'd like to ask you is about the community sentiment on this kind of issue. And when we're talking about lifting or removing the rate peg and the community appetite to fund services that are well outside of that traditional roads rates and rubbish, what do you think the community sentiment is on things like council stepping in to provide early childhood education? If you were seeking to raise rates to be able to provide services like that, is it something the community would support?
Yeah, good question. I think I would say yes. I think the community has been, the response to council's initiative on, you know, trying to plug the gap on this childcare has been very supportive. I think it's probably not something that we necessarily wanted to get into, but we see that it's such an important role within the community, especially with working mothers, et cetera, that we do have some facility there. So we've had no, even though councils had to stump up some money to make sure this can happen, there's been no adverse comments from the community to say that, you know, why are we doing this or whatever? So I think as a general rule, we see childcare and, you know, out of our school care and all those things as essential components of a viable community.
Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. I wondered if I can pick up on federation council in your submission. You mention the financial issues facing federation council that are not a result of the merger, nor have they occurred over time. Since the merger, they are a result of sustained underfunding and a lack of strategic management. And that's a quote from your submission on page three, I believe. In terms of, there's two issues there. In terms of the sustained underfunding, let's park that for one moment. And then there's the lack of strategic management. I just wondered if I could invite you to make comment on that lack of strategic management and how you think we can address that issue? Whether it is a good idea to tip more money into councils if there is that lack of strategic management? Because are we still just going to have the same problems infinitum?
Yeah, happy to speak to that one. Thank you, Chair. So having been involved in councils for around 20 years, I felt personally that the councils, in many aspects, and I think it was just an agreed thing, where depreciation was just factored in and then taken out. And then it was balance your budget, make a surplus, if you can, cash surplus. I think rate pegging's been the driver of those issues. But I think councils have never had the resources to actually invest in strategic financial management until perhaps around when 2012 came along, and we all went through the integrated planning and reporting framework. I think that's, some councils have embraced that really well. I think Parkshire council were an example in the early days. I was across at Lachlan as a director when Parks went through a really strong process, and they, off the back of that, got a successful SRV at the time and improved their rates base to then, you know, drive that community. And they've got a lot of other advantages where they are. Our council's very similar in a lot of characteristics to Park's in terms of land area, road length, population, they're growing a bit more and they'll probably take off, but, you know, we've got the Murray. So but I think there's examples where councils in those early days were at the front of it, and they did put in for their SRVs, and it's a lot easier then when you're working on a rate base of, you know, 15-plus million. Compared to us, we're down about nine or 10. So I think the councils just didn't have, you know, and not only in financial, but also in planning, so strategic planning to do all the growth work. And I think the state can play a real role in terms of solutions, in terms of examples like the Office of Local Government being more resourced, understand there's more funding being pushed into that office now. I think when you talk to really, really much, you know, people have retired already, but they said in the old days, I don't know what years they're talking about, probably the 70s or 80s, they said the OLG was a real capacity, capability organisation. Now, I think the attitudes are great right down through that team, but I don't think there's enough there to then actually be proactive and have councils working forward. You know, they had things in the old days like promoting better practice reviews, where you could actually have your council scorecard and you could work forward across those areas. you could actually have your council scorecard and you could work forward across those areas. Now we find we have, you know, Professor Drew reports and we have all these other consultants that we pay upwards of a hundred grand just to try and get some externality around what we probably mostly know. I think the state could really, this committee could recommend a much stronger framework around improvement. We're put under the audit office now for a reason. We have ARI committees, which I think as one of the, I suppose, you know, newer GMs into the scene, why would we shy away from all that? Why don't we welcome all that red tape, but then get funding to continue to improve, give our communities confidence that we can then raise rates, you know, not 3% and 2%, but maybe 10% when we need to, if it's through an IPR process. Do the mobile, do the childcare. We do a great thing at Yarrenha, and it's carried through Federation, is mobile preschool. There's 100 and something kids that get mobile preschool across Bore Creek to Oakland's and Daysdale that would never have that chance. Early education's critical. We are thankful of state government support for that programme. We don't have to go into the childcare as yet. But, yeah, I think there's a real chance for strategic financial management. I think everyone's hit it now. They've realised through all this focus on the mergers, they probably took the easy way out with the reforms in 2015, did the mergers, didn't do the rest of the strong work out of that review that could have built that capability. But I think everyone's realising that you can't ignore depreciation going forward.
And to that point, Chair, I think also with a merged council, there's such a massive workload, like just combining your rates harmonisation, LEPs, like there's a massive workload that comes on those councils, and they are under-resourced. You know, in relation to, you know, a lot of communities with planning, with a lot of planning to do with, you know, your underground utilities, it's just getting those staff and the cost of running those studies. But to enable future housing, future developments, yeah, definitely need help in that area, for sure.
Did you have any comments to make on other of those items, Lockhart, before I move to another question? No? Okay, beautiful. Thank you. In terms of the strategic financial management, Mr Butler, that you mentioned, and in terms of the role of OLG, is it the case that you would see OLG as having more of a role to play in that area? It sounds like there are councils across the state that are perhaps doing better than others. Is there a way that we can, you know, bring everyone up across the board?
I think so. I think OLG, you know, they're not the finance experts. We've got the audit office and we've got PCorp. So there's a lot of, a lot of things have come about since 2015 in that space. I think it's just making sure it's coordinated and everyone can, you know, move forward. They're all on a different journey. We've all got different backgrounds in terms of our rate bases, et cetera. But I think, yeah, OLG should be able to play a, you know, capability build role and get us back to a bit more of a generic template standard approach instead of everyone having to charge off and do their own thing with reports and reviews.
I mean, is there a need to upskill in other areas, would you say? I just invite you all to make comment on that in terms of whether it's just the financial management. Is there a need for upskilling in other areas that councils currently involve?
I was just going to say we could upskill the planning portal, it would be great. Thanks.
One thing I was going to add in relation to the references to OLG is, I know some of the feedback I get from my staff is, it's probably got to do with the auditing of, you know, our financial statements by the auditor general. You know, the amount of focus on certain aspects of it, which, you know, we sometimes have difficulty understanding why there's so much focus on certain things. And, you know, to be fair, the auditor general, we've had plenty of opportunities to provide feedback. And of course, they, what they indicate to us is that, you know, they don't set the framework that they have to audit against, you know. They have to audit us against the code, for example, of accounting practice. And they, I think at times too, you know, aren't sure what the benefit or what the reasons are for some of the things they're auditing. So that's where I think there could be maybe some better alignment between OLG and even the auditor general in terms of where the auditor general is focused to pay a lot of attention on some things that we just see there's little benefit in. And it's probably mostly around asset valuations, for example. You know, a lot of feedback about how much time and effort and cost has to go into valuing assets that obviously we can't sell, you know, can't be disposed of in any way. And, you know, they mandated to us. And the auditor general, I suppose, because it's in the code, they spend a lot of time focusing on that. But, you know, they can't explain the benefit to us of that either. You know, they're forced to audit those things. So I think that's the sort of question that could come back to an OLG.
So there's a need to review the current sort of accounting model that is being used to...
Yeah, yeah. And I think where a lot of the resources are focused on audit, you know. I mean, if we, we're obviously different to a corporation. If we were a private corporation, you know, there's a lot of reasons why a user of the financial statements would want to make sure about certain things. They might be thinking about lending money to that corporation, they might be thinking of investing in it. But with local government, we're talking about a lot of time being spent on what a road is worth or what a pipe under the ground is worth, which no matter what amount of financial trouble we would get into, we can't sell those things off to save ourselves. So you've just got to wonder what the benefit of spending so much time on those things is.
Thank you. Please do, yeah.
This reminds me of, we were back at another hearing where they were talking about the requirements they had in terms of when it came to actually being able to justify the impact of disasters on their assets and the like, and how they weren't actually able to justify it because they didn't have photos of the road from six months ago, so to speak. Just interested in your perspective in what you're having to do to be able to show and catalogue that database and asset management, and what sort of requirements council has in that regard.
Well, there's probably two things here. One is, there's a fair bit of sort of compliance and, you know, photographs and the like to, for reporting on the disaster recovery funding we get. But, you know, separate to that, in terms of the auditing of our financial statements, it's more around, you know, we're often outsourcing the valuation of those assets to independent valuers. And then when we get those reports, we're asked to, we're asked whether we've, you know, questioned or challenged those reports, you know, to make sure they're robust enough, even though we're not valuers ourselves and the whole purpose of going out to independent qualified valuers to get that sort of information. So that's the sort of thing I'm talking about in terms of the amount of effort and time and resource.
A lot of cost, but very little reward at the end.
I suppose that's the question. What is the benefit at the end? That's the answer we haven't received. What's the purpose of it?
No, no, no problem at all. Did you have further comments on either of those points?
Yeah, I guess it's just a real challenge. Like Peter picked up, we're not a corporation, we're not a private entity, but somehow we've still got to be, we still have funds, we've got to account for them. So we can't have a whole separate accounting practice outside of the code. And the engineering part is, there's so many variables in that, the road, we don't have data that says, you know, 20 years ago, there was 100mm put under that bit of bitumen and this bit's only got 50mm. A lot of that stuff is still going to be a bit variable when we're dealing with old roads. But somewhere, I guess, I think what Peter's going to is the time and the churn of staff working back and forwards in the auditors' offices is where it doesn't then allow us to get the funding out onto those roads. So somehow, I suppose, in between, there's got to be a better way of doing it. We have impairment where we, community members say, oh, what was the last quarter? You had a really, you know, drastic result in your, in your operating result, non-cash, obviously, but when there was an old bit of road that we still had a value on, but we built a whole big new road over it. And, you know, they don't just get that. They think we're somehow trying to hide the figures. But some of that impairment discussion has got to be sort of cleaned up, I think, as well. Because as we said, we didn't sell the old bit of road, we just built over it. So it's, yeah, it's a real, you know, I think we're in a hard place there, but there's got to be a better way through it, yeah.
Do you have suggestions for that? Sorry, I meant, didn't mean to interrupt, Mr Vannery.
All I was going to add is, I mean, if I was the OLG, I think I'd want councils to know or be concerned with what the condition of their assets are and how much it might cost to bring them up to an acceptable standard or to the standard the community want. I don't know that I'd want them to focus on what the market value of them is. And that's where we seem to be spending a lot of time.
Thank you. Did you have any other suggestions around, yeah, improving that cycle, I suppose?
I think the engineers and that would have plenty, plenty of suggestions on planning by background, but I think the engineers would have a lot of suggestions. And even to Peter's point, I think that's where it lands. It's saying, let's just focus on what the backlog is, how can we improve that road? Not just to the six metres, we want eight metres now, we want to be able to cater for the bigger trucks. Because that's the other problem with accounting is, the backlog only puts it back to what it was, it doesn't do that, the betterment thing, not so much betterment from a flood, betterment to create roads for the future for our current trucks. So that's where the accounting standards do fall over to, because they're not, they're just saying your backlog's only putting back your small road, but we're talking about, never would build that road again. You're going to build a better road because we've got bigger trucks and more freight. So there's another dilemma there I think they're sorting through.
Should councils not be forced to revalue their assets quite so frequently, would you say as well?
Yeah, I guess with caution. I think where roads obviously just stands out on its own, but I think the revaluation of other assets like water and sewer is critical. And they are far easier to get industry benchmarks on those products and plants. But, yeah, I think the churn around the road revaluations is probably where the, where the, where the wastage occurs, yeah.
Any of my colleagues have any final questions?
In terms of Federation Council, I think you went through a special rate variation process. Was that last year?
The year before. So we're now in our second, second year of temporary approval, yeah.
And how did you find that process? And from your experience with that, what would you, what do you think could be done better in terms of the amount of resources you had to put into applying for that special rate variation?
Certainly significant work. We did most of that in-house, this time around through only receiving a temporary approval and getting the independent review done as a separate matter. But there were some SRV recommendations naturally from that. We've engaged assistants with capacity to pay report and a new hardship policy and some community consultation. So it's certainly probably, if we had our time again, we'd gain some more outside assistance. But it's also, it was a great way of bringing staff up to speed. We did fail on the community engagement or community awareness aspect of that, mainly around hard copy mail-outs, and we didn't take that option as strong as we should have. So, but as far as through IPART, we couldn't have bolted any of that process. Are very supportive of that whole process. The community, you know, it's always going to be quite alarming when Yarrenha had never gone through a rate increase before. They had flagged one if we had a survived merger. And Chorrel had gone through a number of minor ones, seven or eight per cent, ones which weren't really going to go anywhere, but they got those approved. But, yes, the community certainly came out, you know, strongly against those large numbers. But as far as through IPART...
So there was quite a bit of bill shock, it's safe to say, in terms of...
Yeah, yeah. I think it's just, you know, there's certainly an awareness, as the mayor pointed out with the flooding, that there's certainly an awareness that there was a need to inject some more funding into our assets. And I think through the independent review led by Professor Drew, it showed that there's not a lot of wastage. We are proven to be one of the most efficient councils and the mergers cost us around 11% a year. That's backed by the data in the report, in the independent report. But certainly, I think the shock of, I think, you know, some of the community thought we could just cut a bit of tourism or cut a bit of this or that, and we might be able to just throw it onto the roads, scale of where the road backlog's up to. I think probably, you know, put some shock out there. But we've also got to look at our own rate base. We are quite low when compared to other councils. I know that doesn't help. You can't just put it straight up because you've got cost of living pressures. So, yeah, we're in that real, you know, challenge. We're going to reset, reapply for a special rate variation to lock in those two temporaries and seek another couple of years. But that'll be up to community engagement and up to a new council as well to endorse that. Well underway.
Thanks. Thanks so much. That's all we have time for today. Thank you for making time to be here and give evidence to the inquiry today. Any questions on notice, any supplementary questions on notice, the committee secretary will be in touch with the details around those. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now have a short break. Thanks.
Thanks for the opportunity.
We might start?
Yeah.
Thank you. Welcome to our next lot of inquiry participants and thank you for making the time to give evidence at this inquiry today. Starting with the people in the room, Ms Arnold and Mrs Shild. If you could start by stating your name, position, title and swearing either the oath or the affirmation please.
Sure, so my name is Evelyn Arnold, I'm the General Manager at Greater Hume Council. And I'd like to read out the affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Am I on now?
Yes, just leave it on.
Sorry, I thought I'd turn it off. I'm councillor Annette Shild and currently acting mayor for Greater Hume Council. And I'm going to say the oath. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. And now online, if I could ask you both to do the same, state your name, position, title and take either the oath or the affirmation please.
Brenna Thompson, I'm deputy mayor currently acting in the position of mayor for Snow Valley's council and I'll read the oath. Swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, Stephen Pinnick, interim general manager of Snow Valley's council. I will wear the oath. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. And would either of you like to start by making a short opening statement, perhaps starting again with those in the room here?
Look, I'm fine to just go to questions but the deputy mayor may want to speak?
Hello, I was just going to say a little bit about Greater Hume Council.
Please do, yeah.
It's a wonderful diverse community with about 11,000 population hovering around that. We're placed nicely between Aubrey and Wagga Wagga, two larger centres and on the Melbourne to Sydney railway line, which is most of the, it's very convenient for everyone. We're not far from the snow, the sea and the, you know, the outback. We consist of five large towns and six villages. We have diverse industries. A large proportion is primary production, which is very important to us. And we also have three high schools and multiple primary schools. And we have private and public in all of those areas. And it's just a great place to be.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Online to Snow Valley's, did either of you have a short opening statement?
Yes, I've got a short opening statement that I'd like to offer please. So firstly, thank you to the State Development Committee for providing Snow Valley's council the opportunity to appear before the inquiry. The opening statement will briefly touch on the inadequacy of financial assistance grants, cost shifting and rate exemptions. Since financial assistance grants were introduced in the 1970s, the financial sustainability of local government has been the subject of multiple inquiries and reviews. The only constant over this period of time is that local government continues to be squeezed, particularly in rural areas of New South Wales. In Australia, local government is at the bottom of the third chain with limited taxing ability and rate peg in New South Wales since the 1970s. Financial assistance grants are local government's rightful share of the Australian national taxation revenue. However, since their introduction, local government share has continued to diminish from around 1% of national taxation revenue to around 51% following the 24-25 federal budget. The federal government will argue that other programmes such as roads to recovery and local roads and community infrastructure programmes that have been introduced that will offset the reducing fags in real terms. The challenge for local government is that fags are untied, whereas other programmes are tied predominantly to asset construction or renewal. And for local government, this is the crux of the problem. Through the reduction of untied fags and cost shifting from both the state and federal government and rate exemptions, local government is dying a death at a thousand cuts. The intent of fire fags is to ensure equitable levels of service by reasonable efforts of council and for that reason it is untied. The diminishing fags in real terms continue to impact on the ability of local government and particularly in relation to Snowy Valleys Council to administratively operate and provide basic services such as adequate road maintenance, libraries, waste services and swimming pools, all of which this council has had to significantly reduce in recent years and as late as last month. These tight grants such as, the tight grants such as roads to recovery have been gratefully received in assisting asset upgrade and/or renewal of infrastructure assets to meet the changing transport and social needs of our communities in the 21st century. But if council is operationally unsustainable, then there's a major issue which needs to be addressed. The squeeze caused by reducing fags in real terms has been compounded by cost shifting, particularly by the state government in a form policy such as the emergency services levy. At least a decade ago, the state government of the day stated that there will be no changes to policy on local government unless the financial consequences were identified and compensated. Fortunately, this has never occurred and the recent introduction of the internment services levy with little genuine consultation is just another example of the many changes that have been made over the years that impact on local government. Finally, rate exemptions, including pension and concessions legislated by the state government, continue to impact significantly on local government. Pensionate concessions are clearly a welfare measure which quite rightly should be the remit of other levels of government. With regards to Snowy Valley Council, another significant anomaly is New South Wales Forestry Corporation operating as a commercial forester, not being charged rates on their commercial operations. And it seems incredible that New South Wales Forestry Corporation do not pay rates on their operations, however, a private operator next door does. These are just two examples of many rate exemptions that now menace fiercely unfair to local government. In conclusion, this inquiry provides a unique opportunity once and for all to develop a sustainable future for local government, which is at the grassroots of our democracy. Committee members, Snowy Valleys Council implores you to keep an open mind when recommending significant change before local government withers on the vine before our eyes. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to questions to my colleagues to see if anyone wants to start, Dr Amanda Con.
Thanks so much for travelling to Aubrey today and to Snowy Valleys for being here online. My first question, just to Snowy Valleys, in picking up on something that you mentioned in your opening statement, which was the forestry being currently exempt from rates. Appreciate you might need to take this one on notice, but I'm wondering if there's been any work done to calculate the value of that loss of rates to your council?
Look, I will take that on notice if you don't mind. Like, there's about 154,000 hectares of state forest within the shire, but we'd have to do a more accurate analysis of exactly how much of that is under active forests and how much is just, you know, normal state forest, which would obviously apply to other councils as well. So I'm happy to take that on notice.
I'd just add to that as well is that it's not only forest park that is unrated land. We also have significant national parks. So across our Snowy Valleys Council area, we've got probably 60% of our land that is unrated. So it still has the roads going through it, it still requires infrastructure. Staff who work in there utilise our community. So 60% unratable is a significant area that we're actually trying to maintain.
Thank you. I also wanted to ask Snowy Valleys a similar question that I asked a Federation Council earlier this afternoon, because you're a council that was created through forced amalgamation in 2016 and I understand the previous government provided some short-term financial support at that time for newly amalgamated councils. Moving forward, are you still feeling the ongoing impact of that amalgamation? Has the financial support been adequate? Do we need to be looking at amalgamated councils in a more unique position than the broader financial picture across New South Wales?
Well, our council is actually in the middle of going through a process trying to demerge. It was always sold as hit for the future and sustainability and capacity. And what we have found since the forced amalgamation is that our capacity to actually extend the services and the infrastructure across the whole of Snowy Valleys Council is diminishing. We now have 9,000 square kilometres for 14,500 population. We have a population density of around 1.6 and yet we're still expected to deliver. And geographically, ironically today, apparently it's snowing at Laurel Hill, which is halfway between the two major centres and we have staff who are expected to travel for both. So the funding was never adequate and without being completely disrespectful, it felt like the 30 pieces of silver handed out to try and appease people, but it was never ongoing. The funding to actually enable the merged entity to function was not continuing. And with the rate peg, we, we as the larger, the former larger centre, are now looking at services that we never had to fund. Chumatchi Council never had to fund childcare, it never had to fund aged care, it never had to provide health service outlets. It, there are so many of these services that we weren't, that we now have and it's taking from a wider, wider cross section. Did you want to add to?
Look, I might just add to that to some extent because I suppose Snowy Valleys circumstances are a little bit more unique than federations in that, you know, the amalgamation itself is a, you know, is a great disruptor to the organisation. And having previous experience at amalgamated council, you know, it takes a long period of time to recover from that upheaval. But I suppose the other challenge that Snowy Valleys Council have had is that in 2019, 2020, 45% of the shire was burnt out from the Black Summer bushfires. So it was an organisation that was still operating in some level of a crisis moment as bushfires hit. And then, you know, you just got the fires out and then, of course, we went into Covid. So it's been an extraordinarily difficult period of time to Snowy Valleys over the last eight years that it's been amalgamated. And, you know, there's no doubt in my mind that a lot of the challenges that Snowy Valleys faces because of that, you know, upheaval, one after another, which has made it very difficult for the organisation to find its feet as an amalgamated council. Look, in our case, yes, you know, some additional funding would be great to allow us to achieve some things that never got achieved through that period of time. But the biggest challenge at Snowy Valleys Council is it's just, it's just, the whole structure of the council is unsustainable. We just can't generate enough revenue for, to maintain our operating expenses and that's the challenge that we face at the moment.
Sorry, without trying to tackle, part of the issue of concern is the fact that we've also lost virtually every senior executive. So since the merged entity, we've lost so much of our, our intellectual knowledge across the organisation. So we go from one thing to another, but it's things when you come down to the basics. At the National General Assembly last week, they spoke about livability and walkability. We have communities that are now being pitted against each other just because they want additional hours for library services, which also acts as a service centre. And so that, that original merger is now dividing communities even more because they're having to try and decide who gets the piece of the pie that lets the libraries open an extra day or the swimming pools for an extra day. We're just, we're just financially exhausted.
Thank you. Chair, if I may have one more question to all of you, which is that it's very clear that rural and regional councils are providing a huge range of services that metropolitan councils don't have to. And today we've spoken about childcare, about aged care, about supporting health services. You just mentioned disaster resilience and recovery. I'm interested if you could give us some local examples of your councils stepping in to provide those services and how you're currently funding those.
Well, look, I'm having some right here to say something because we're monopolised so far.
We see a lot of those services, it is repeated in Greater Hume, but it's 20 years since Greater Hume had the forced amalgamation. That was just a few months ago, that was 20 years. It has taken a long time, but there's still issues with parts of the council, parts of the shire, I should say, they haven't adjusted as well. And in those days, there was absolutely no support with financial assistance. So on Monday, Friday afternoon, they went home as three different councils and Monday morning they were expected to be one. So there's a credit to the people that navigated through all of that. It's still, even within our shire, the eastern part is quite a different agricultural area. They're more grazing and then there is, we also have forestry as well and the west is more dry land cropping and sheep and that sort of thing. So even with our small shire, well, we've recently been upgraded to a large rural shire, but we didn't get any extra benefits for that. It's still very different from one end of the shire to the other. And over the time, we used to have aged care facilities, but we've, we chose to do away with that. We're very involved with child, child services, long daycare and that is a huge need within the shire and we've got a lot of, well, we're the three hospitals and some nursing homes. We have a lot of demand for nursing staff and to have them fit in with the shift work with young families, it's very challenging. So that's a big service that we've taken on and it's been run very well, but it's still, the hours are not quite enough for everybody. And to keep staff, nursing staff, which is vital in our community, it's, it's a real challenge. One lady on the edge of town, on the edge of our shire in the west drives from out near Rand over to Walla, drops a child off and then goes to work and then comes back. So she's doing two, two and a half hours a day just travelling to get her child and then by the time she gets home, you know, it's just straight to bed. So those sort of challenges are there. And as already said, the emergency services levy, the libraries, that's another important vital service, but there's pressure because we have the five towns and each one expects, you know, the similar service in which we want to provide, but it's stretching the dollars all the time. The emergency levy, that's just been very unfair and I'm sure you've heard that already many times, but it's not even our asset and, but we're expected to take the brunt of the costs of it. Where do we find that extra money? It is harder to maintain our, the services that people do expect and we don't have the, the rate base like the bigger cities or the bigger places. We can't put parking meters up to get some more income and we rely heavily on what's given to us. And I've forgotten if I've answered the question or not.
It's a great list of examples. The last bit was about how you're currently funding those things. So I, you know, things like childcare.
We just need more money, basically.
Are you having to fund those things out of your general rates revenue?
Yes, so if I could just perhaps step in there. So essentially, any shortfall we have has to be, has to be breached, as you say, by a rate base. So a couple of critical examples for us recently, we provide a budget, if you like, for the maintenance of rural fire service, plant and equipment. This year, that's $100,000 in the hole. We've met with the, the current service, but they, the vehicles and plant needs to be serviced. We weren't given a budget, they haven't got a budget and they've simply put in a bid and so we're on the wing and a prayer type budget. So that shortfall, we, we have to find. We can't not fund that. I mean, place in a possible situation of saying to them, we can't, only essential maintenance now because we haven't got the funds, the funds aren't there. Another example of where we're trying to breach the gap with rate payer funds is our biosecurity and weeds control. So that's now become a grant-based process. We were unsuccessful in the grant, which was unfortunate, especially as we'd already spent the $85,000 we were expecting to get. So those numbers are not large from a metropolitan point of view, but that's almost $200,000 that I'm now short. That has to come from Greater Hume rate payers when we're already struggling to make our business as usual, as our business as usual work. So the, the funding model simply doesn't, if you're looking at it from a business point of view, we're not sustainable. We manage to keep going as local governments, not just Greater Hume, from, because we have to and because the state really has to fund us, otherwise those services stop. But we're now really much, very much in what I would term a Hunger Games type scenario where we're forced to cannibalise each other to try and prove that Greater Hume rate payers are more disadvantaged or more needy or more prioritised than Snowy Valleys or my other, my other colleagues and neighbours, which is not, not the fact, not the truth. They all deserve to have those services and that infrastructure maintained and it shouldn't be based simply on whether I can put a better business case for disadvantage than my, my neighbours. That's just not a sustainable way. If the state is really, is really focused on trying to make this work, the whole model of how we're funded simply, has, simply has to be reviewed because in answer the question, we can't, we simply can't. I mean, Snowy Valleys, as pointed out, quite rightly, they've got different challenges from us, but the challenges are the same. You, you scratch the surface at every single, especially in the rural and regional areas because we don't have the opportunity to generate revenue in the same way. So we really are reliant on what we're given and an acknowledgement of what we're trying to provide and do for our community. And I don't think that you should be able to, to judge one community more worthy than the next based on a grant funding process for some of those services.
Can I just add with the weeds? Like, I've had a farming background. I mean, the wind and the birds don't know where those invisible boundary lines are. So why on earth do we have to compete with our neighbouring councils to get funding to manage that? And, and noxious weeds, they can make heck of a mess to creeks and rivers and we've got the Billabong Creek running right through us and we're on the, the border of the Murray River. You know, at the weir, we, we've got quite a, a long shoreline there. You know, how, how can you consider that even a possibility to make us do that, to apply for money to manage the weeds? And it is a problem because we will be up the creek, we won't have a paddle because we won't get through the weeds. But we just, you know, that's just not common sense in my book, you know, that you've got two shires or three shires, however many you might border on, that you're fighting for funding. You know, it just doesn't make sense. And it's, it's just making it harder and harder and the state seems to just keep handballing more responsibilities to the local government and then we're supposed to find the money and the time and effort to follow through.
Thank you. It's a great example. Did Snowy Valleys want to add to that before I hand back to my colleagues? I think they're on mute.
On mute.
Sorry, they're on mute, Snowy Valleys. We can't hear you at the very least.
Not good at rippling, ripbreathing.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, not sure what happened there, but yeah, so look, basically what I said was I concur with everything that Bradyham said in relation to the funding model, just needs to be completely reworked, but I certainly agree with the comments that the General Manager of Bradyham made in relation to noxious weeds. Similar thing happened to Snowy Valleys. We're in two local land services here, Murray and Riverina. We were successful in Murray, but unsuccessful in Riverina and as was pointed out, the grant announcements were that late this year, that in... that in twenty-three, twenty-four, the, the financial year was virtually over before the successful people were notified. So, um, as was pointed out, you know, councils have gone on and expended some money in those areas in good faith. And then we're unsuccessful in the competitive grant programme. It's just ludicrous. And, uh, how that was allowed to happen, I do not know. Anyway, that's, uh, probably, uh, we did have a meeting with local land services about that. And, um, that's probably a discussion for another day. But it's just one of the many things that's impacting on rural councils in some areas.
Can I just say, you were asking for some examples. One of the examples of Snowy Valley's council having to fund probably things that our metro relatives don't have to is things like childcare. And particularly in the Tumbar, or the, the Tumbar-Umba region, childcare is so essential because if you don't have the provision of childcare, then you don't have access to professionals with young families. They won't move to an area if they can't have their children cared for. So we have that. We also had, um, you know, looking at, we've got the next two terms of capital have some really hard decisions to make financially. And, and it's an incredibly difficult thing to ask elected representatives to say to their community, we have no money and you can't have it. And one of the examples of that is that within our own budget, because we were unsuccessful when we applied to IPART for a special rate variation, we then had to come up with at least for this year, one point two million dollars. And one of the, the areas or a couple of areas included, we had to cut our, the grants that we had, our community grants, our sports grants, we've had to reduce the hours for the libraries and the pools. So you can imagine how well that has gone over with the community. Because just like local government, the state and federal for funding, some of these smaller community groups really look to those scraps that we provide actually for some of the basics that they want. So we're going backwards. We just don't seem to be able to get our head above water.
Thank you. Um, looking to my colleagues now, the honourable Scott Farlow.
Thank you and thank you for being here in person. And thank you for being here online as well to Snowy Valley's. I might pick up on that point in terms of the special rate variation for Snowy Valley's. I note that, um, when it came to that decision, it wasn't approved by IPART. And they've said to keep to the rate peg. I just wondered if you could perhaps, um, outline to us that process and, and where to from here for Snowy Valley's after that determination?
Um, well, look, yes, I'm happy to talk about that. Uh, look, we were of the view that the, um, the assessment by IPART was particularly tough. Um, and we've, we've since had a meeting with IPART around that. Uh, but to some degree, uh, some of the comments that they made were fair. And, and look, it relates to the immaturity of Snowy Valley's council as an organisation, unfortunately, in relation to, uh, some of the documents that we probably should have that we don't have, like robust asset management plans, et cetera. Um, which, you know, to, to, to my way of thinking is a, is a product, given that I've only been here for about eleven months, is a product of, you know, all the challenges that Snowy Valley's council has faced since it got amalgamated. Um, so look, the decision is what it is. I was a bit surprised, given our financial position, that they didn't give us anything, even if it was a temporary increase, to try and allow us to get some of those documents that we'd need to substantiate our case completed. But that was the decision they made at the time. Uh, as the acting mayor has said, we're still pursuing a demalgamation here, which we hopefully might know by the end of this calendar year as to where that's going. Um, so look, you know, given that we're unsuccessful this year and the future of the council is still a little bit uncertain, we won't be going back to the well in twenty-twenty-five. Uh, but I think that council will probably, you know, either as one council or two councils in twenty-twenty-six would go back for a, for a special rating variation application.
Can I just add to, to that, that when the council was merged, there were very strict guidelines around the staffing and, and what you couldn't, couldn't do. So you couldn't just walk in and, and suddenly harmonise all of this stuff and move people on and to offer redundancies at that time. So there were very strict guidelines. What is now happening and what has happened with the fact that we didn't receive the, um, special rate variation is that we've had to come up with one point two million dollars worth of savings just in this year. And that's where we're looking at the reduction in services. But also we've had to look significantly at reductions in staff. And you can imagine in our rural areas, when you start talking about staff reductions, even though it's a necessary thing and we don't really have an option or a plan B, that has an enormous blow on effect, not only to the community per se, but to the other staff. We have staff who feel guilty that they actually have to compete against each other for a position. And that really does in a time of such uncertainty economically. It's an, it's an awful thing to have to impose on our community. So we get that nobody wanted a special rate variation, we didn't either. But people also didn't want a reduction in services. So we are stuck between a rock and a hard place. And at the end of the day, we have no opportunity to generate that income other than through exceptional fees and charges. And even some of those are legislated. And again, that's not real good for the community. It's a tough gig trying to generate income from a rock.
Thank you. Um, and to pick up on a question I've asked a few councils in border communities for both of you, um, with what I would think would be Toowoong in, um, the case of Snowy Valley's and Indigo when it comes to Greater Hume. What's the comparison between your neighbouring councils, the other side of the border, in terms of their rates compared to yours? If you're, if you're aware, or if you want to take it on notice?
We might need to take that one on notice. We haven't, we're, oh, we just recently struck our rates. We, we are lower compared to most of our neighbours and we have stuck with the rate cap with a variation only for growth. Um, but we generally speaking haven't looked. Um, one of our neighbours is federation and they have a significantly different approach. They've had a special rate variation. So we are probably in the mid to low range, but I, I will check those numbers.
And how does that compare to the other side of the border across Victoria?
That I'd have to, to check because we normally just look at the New South Wales world, to be honest. So.
No, it's just interesting in terms of looking at, and we've had a bit of, um, uh, evidence uh, in the north coast as well in terms of Queensland, um, and some of the considerations taken into account there and also looking at Victoria. And I guess these are quite acute when it comes to border communities. Um, any perspective on that from Snowy Valley's?
I think we have to take it on notice as well. The only thing I would say is though, that from reports that have been put out before, um, around the, um, review of the rate pegging legislation was that generally speaking, rates in Victoria in rural areas are higher than New South Wales.
Thank you. Um, also interested, I, I think Ms Arnold, you've made the, you used the terminology when it came to grant funding of Hunger Games, um, which, uh, which is quite funny in comparison to some of the other analyses we've had where it's been the beauty contest. But I think you were telling quite a different story where, um, I think we'd heard, we've heard throughout this inquiry and from other councils that sometimes the councils that are able to stack up a business case, the councils that are able to outline, um, a, you know, effectively through a grants writer or the like, how their project is better. Whereas you're telling a story somewhat of where councils need to show even more need than their neighbour. Just interested in terms of how that comes into the, the equation, so to speak, and that, that need that you're outlining when it comes to grant funding and, and being successful in grant funding.
Sure, so it's a real challenge because, because Greater Hume, I guess, is, um, not really big, but not really small. Um, we don't have, we're quite, uh, our population has a quite a good socio-economic base. So we're not considered, depending on what models and definitions, and they change each time the grants come out, to be honest. So we do shift, but we're not considered in some aspects to be disadvantaged.
So for instance, I think of a defibrillator programme that was being offered where it looked at, uh, lower socio-economic communities, for instance. And even within, uh, certain council areas made a division based on suburbs and their, um, their ranking. So yes.
Yeah, exactly right. And there was one recently that we were unsuccessful for, I forget the name of it. I think it was around growing the regions. Um, where we would have also had to, to provide a greater joint funding. So the other challenge for us, because we're not really big, not really small and not considered disadvantaged, and I hate to use that word, but it's not my terminology. We're also having to find more money to match. So every grant comes with a matching requirement, um, which, uh, which assumes budget capacity. And we simply, um, we don't have a, a case, we can make a very good case. But when we're compared to our neighbours on, uh, some of our neighbours and some of the other projects on that basis, we simply can't compete. It's a good project, it's a great project, it'll make good impact in our community. But in the broad screen of things, we, we, it's very difficult for us to make that case that we're exceptional and should therefore be funded. And then if we are, we then have the challenge of finding the matching funds to go, to go with it. So it really does make us feel a lot like, um, that we are competing and that we have to prove a greater need to be able to get that money. Um, and that's a challenge for Greater Hume because we're, we're, we're pretty good, you know, in lots of respects financially.
But you're not good enough.
But we're not good or bad enough, you know what I mean? That's how it feels.
Yeah.
That's just my opinion, looking at the grants, that really has how it feels. Um, and so the community is either not big enough or not small enough or not wealthy enough or not disadvantaged enough. Um, and I would say there would be a few of us in this category. Uh, in Aubrey City and, and Wagga, they're, they're bigger, so they have, uh, different opportunities. So it really is just getting ourselves on the map as somewhere that should be funded i- is a challenge for us. And we've proved recently, uh, through the disaster recovery funding we did get, how well we can perform when we're given the funds to, to improve the infrastructure. Um, but therein lies my worry. We had to have a series of disasters to get sufficient funding to, to fund and repair our road infrastructure. I really don't want to have to do future budgeting, hoping that we're going to have another disaster. So can I ensure I've got funds to, to renew that or maintain that? Because that's where we sit at the moment, is that we have to continually prove our case for the stuff that we're already delivering to our communities and doing very, very well when we're funded appropriately to do so.
Thank you. And, and to Snowy Valley's, would you classify yourselves in the, the same category that, uh, maybe not, um, eligible in one category because you're not big enough and not eligible in another category because you're not, um, as disadvantaged?
Well, in our case, I suppose the level of disadvantage varies considerably across the Shire. Um, so some areas, there's a little disadvantage, a bit like Greater Hume, but in other areas, there is significant disadvantage. But the number's small, unfortunately. Um, and the same, the same rules apply to Snowy Valley's that apply to Greater Hume. That you're trying to make your case stack up against, you know, bigger councils and it's, it's extraordinarily difficult to do so. Um, and even with the matching contributions, the same applies. So, um, you know, if we're going to match a contribution for a grant, uh, you know, un- unless we've got those funds somewhere in a capital budget for a certain area that we can shift to, to use for that particular project, then it's outside our financial capacity to match the grants. Uh, and therefore that will diminish the amount of grants that we can apply for because we just haven't the financial capacity to it. So there, there's no, there's no discretionary funding there that councils like ourselves have got, that we can, you know, if you like, that we can, uh, seize on these opportunities as they come from time to time. We just haven't got the capacity to do that. So that's why the untied grants or non-competitive grants are so important to, to councils like Snowy Valley's and other rural councils. Um, you know, which they, for example, the local roads and community infrastructure programme was a non-competitive grant. So look, they're good programmes, uh, that the federal government, for example, was putting in place. And the same applied for the Strong Country Communities Fund, even though I know it's quite controversial in, in some areas. But, uh, those non-competitive grants that provided every council with a share of the funding uh, is far more desirable in rural areas than what, than having to go up against in these competitive grant rounds. Because it's, it's just been, in, in more often than not, we don't have the financial capacity to find that matching funding.
Can I just say too, that the grants that come that are for renew, renewal grants, and, and that means that we've already got the infrastructure on our books and, and we're upgrading and that's fantastic. The difficulty then arises when you start having new infrastructure because the grant funding that is available does not take into consideration the long-term ongoing impacts of the maintenance and the depreciation of that new asset. So every time we have to put a new asset onto our, our books, it actually adds to the bottom line through the depreciation and maintenance. And none of the grants ever include an ongoing funding source that enables those to happen. And, you know, within New South Wales, we have integrated planning and reporting that is, is purely targeted towards making sure that we don't overextend ourselves. But that's almost impossible with some of these grants. And community, just selling to the community that grant funding is not free funding because it always comes with a sting in the tail unless it's purely for renewable existing infrastructure. So it's unbelievably difficult. And, you know, we look at grants to fund things because unlike metro areas, we don't have massive car parks, we don't have facilities that we can actually generate in almost any country.
Thank you. That's a promo.
Thanks. Okay, thanks. Um, thank you. Um, I might just, um, start by asking a couple of questions. You mentioned earlier on about revenue bases and generating enough, um, revenue being obviously a part of the problem here. We've heard from a number of regional councils, um, who have successfully managed to generate revenue um, with things like, you know, waste facilities, airports. What is it that we can do to ensure that councils are generating as much as they can, but also acknowledging that not everyone can have a waste facility or airport that necessarily generates them revenue?
Um, so from my perspective, certainly waste is an area that could generate revenue for, for Greater Hume. I think it's also because of where we're located. Normally with waste, you need to have a critical mass and we could certainly get that with our neighbours. Our barriers to entry in most of those generating areas will be the capital expenditure. So to be able to put in, um, a system by way where maybe where you're capturing carbon emissions from your landfills and, and, um, using that to generate revenue, for example, or using your waste to generate energy, um, you need millions of dollars of investment into the capital infrastructure. So from our perspective, the opportunity to be, um, to be considered for those projects and have a chance to really, uh, usually there's specific criteria. So being able to have a chance to be considered on the merits of the location, to be able to do capital expenditure in that way, would certainly be something that, um, could change the future, uh, financial sustainability of a, a council like Greater Hume. We don't have an airport and at the moment, we have an airstrip. But because of where we're located, it wouldn't make sense for us. But I think there's, so really it would be about providing us with a platform and the opportunity to explore those sorts of, um, investments and what that might mean. Certainly waste and renewable energy, uh, areas that could be a, a real game changer for a council like Greater Hume. Um, but you're talking about millions of dollars that we'd need a joint venture to enter into. Um, we have also the possibility of subdivision, subdivisible land. We have quite a lot, a lot of that in one of our growth towns. Um, again, the, the challenge there is that we need eight to ten million dollars to develop it. Um, and we were in for grants to do that, um, for economic development. But then the focus for state government changed to being more about homes than jobs. Um, and so we lost the opportunity to do that. So there are certainly opportunities for us as a council to generate revenue where it would need to be a bit more of an innovative approach. We also don't have lots of car parks and things like that. Um, and typically local government, as you will know, takes on the services that don't make money uh, because we're doing that to provide those services to, to our community. So it would mean we'd need to open up the opportunity to be involved in a commercial, a more commercially viable enterprise that, um, would be able to, to go beyond our rate space. Because to be perfectly honest, um, rate variations are hard work and they probably aren't going to solve all the problems, certainly not long-term. It's not a long, we're talking about eight hundred thousand dollars to do a kilometre of, of road from, from a brand new stretch of road. Um, so you're talking about a lot of percentages and rate increases to even make inroads, if you pardon the pun, into those types of projects. So it, it needs a different view, a different view on the world um, as to how that, how and where that money might be generated from. And there are definitely opportunities for us that we'd love to be involved in if we could find the right ear.
Thank you. Snowy Valley's, did you have anything to add?
The situation for us is a little bit different because of our sort of more remote location. But, um, uh, you know, non-local government. But, you know, non-local government revenue sources for us are pretty hard to find. We're trying to do what we can with the existing assets that we've got around caravan parks, for example. We're currently going through, going through an expression of interest for all of our caravan parks to try and do two things there. One, try and uplift those caravan parks to better meet the needs of our tourist and visitor economy, which we're trying to build on at the moment. But also to generate, you know, better revenue streams for the council from those assets. So it's probably more us, looking at the current assets that we've got and how we can generate higher levels of income from those than what we're currently generating. But there is some small capacity for, you know, subdivisional expansions in the Shire. I suppose I was a little bit surprised when I got here that, that there is a lot of subdivisional work that goes on, either residential or industrial at the moment. And that would be an opportunity, but, you know, it's, we're no different to Greater Hume, having the capital to, to embark upon some of those projects. It's, you know, we'd be relying on grant funding to be able to do that and it's very, very difficult to get. You know, particularly when we're competing, you know, with the Aubries and Wagga's and, and bigger centres like that that can make it, you know, they can produce a better cost benefit analysis. And therefore they're going to be higher up the, the assessment tree than what we are.
We do actually have FOGO, the waste. But unfortunately, when they designed it and planned it, they hadn't received the approval for the amount that they wanted to generate to turn it into a commercial venture by accepting a lot of the FOGO from other centres. But I think that's something that we're still going to be looking at. And hopefully the, the state will give us a, a bigger approval for the amount of FOGO that we can bring into our waste centre. We do have an aerodrome and I'd like to point out there's a big difference between aerodromes and airport, airport, sorry. You know, the airport is your commercial, where you've got your domestic flights. And, and this aerodrome itself is more recreational, it looks like for RFS. So we do have an aerodrome and I know that there's the, the federal government has put out the, the funding for upgrading of, of rural or small remote airstrips and things. But I don't think that's going to impact on us. And with the housing, you know, it, it's a little bit frustrating because whatever the flavour of the month is, and I get that housing is the flavour at the moment. And even at the National General Assembly, they spoke about three levels of government working together for housing. In small rural communities, it's unbelievably difficult for us to have that role to play. And within Tummit, not Snowy Valleys, but within Tummit, we have very commercial developers who are doing developments of their own, and that is housing developments. But it's the smaller communities like the Tumbarumbas where, as a council, we would need to support them, which has been done in the past. So, but that all comes at a cost. You need to have untied funding in order to be able to advance some of those projects. So I just don't know how we generate revenue through, through the waste and through the aerodrome and through the housing.
Thanks. In terms of the issue now of the ongoing costs of maintenance and, and, you know, we've heard about depreciation of assets and all that sort of thing. I'm interested, particularly with Snowy Valleys. I know you obviously have an aged care facility and a childcare facility that is mentioned in particular in your submission, sorry, a preschool in your submission that's been unable to recruit an early childhood teacher. I'd just invite you to make comment on why it might be the case that, because we've heard from other regional councils that have also got aged care facilities and childcare facilities and that have been able to operate them successfully or, you know, by breaking even, you know, but turning a small profit in some cases. Is that the case for Snowy Valley and if not, why?
Okay, so let, look, I'd just like to clarify that in relation to aged care, it's independent living aged care, not an aged care residential facility, so it's a little bit different.
Thank you for clarifying, that's quite different, thanks.
But in relation to childcare, we run both long day childcare. But we have a small preschool at Cancaven. Now, that's the preschool where we've been unable to attract a teacher to for, I guess, since late last year. So quite a while now. Look, the, the, the issue there is that it's a part-time position and it's quite a remote location. Serves, serves a valuable purpose in that, you know, southern part of the Shire. But it is quite a remote location now. We have offered, as part of that position, to offer them alternate employment at Tumbarumba. But it's a 50-minute drive from Tumbarumba to Cancaven, both ways. So that adds a couple of hours per day to, to someone's day. We've, we've, we've tried everything we can, we're paying over all wages. You know, the conditions are pretty good. The community down there would, would have really embraced someone if they were to live, you know, within the community. But we just can't attract anyone to, to that particular facility. In relation to the long daycare at, at Tumbarumba, we're no different, I don't think, to most regional rural locations that have difficulty in attracting and retaining childcare staff. Again, you know, we probably pay over the award to try and attract and retain. But look, it's been well documented that it's, you know, the, unfortunately, the pay at both ends of the, of the life cycle, being early childhood and residential aged care is pretty low, unfortunately. And it's, it's great to say, look, we need to pay our childcare staff more. But there really isn't the capacity within council to do that unless, unless we get a bigger level of subsidy from the government to allow that to occur. Because we just can't, you know, we just can't continue to put up the fees because of the demographics of some parts of our Shire. You know, I think at the moment, we're paying about a hundred, you know, before the CCB, I think it's about $110 this year per day. You know, and, you know, as a daily fee, that's probably about the maximum that we could expect to, to set it at.
In terms of the independent living, thank you for clarifying that. Is that, I also just invite you to make comment on that and how that is operating, if that's operating at a loss, you know?
Yeah, well, currently it is operating at a loss. And I guess, look, this is one of many projects across the Shire that the former Tumbarumba Shire Council had a clear vision as to how that facility was going to operate. And that the initial four units were, you know, supposed to be the, I think the first four of about 12. However, with the amalgamation, that priority sort of, you know, disappeared to some extent with the, with the new council. So the economy's a scale of that facility now as such that, you know, it's, it's, it's not running, not running at a break even point, but council's committed to it. There isn't really much we can do with that facility at the moment, except to fund the shortfall.
No, can I just make comment on that too? It's, it's really difficult because there's a saying, sometimes you need to spend money to make money. But in order to be able to spend that money, you have to have it. And it's, what is happening within local government, particularly in our rural areas, is that the capacity to generate untied funds is, is eroding to a point. And once upon a time, you used to be given a, a budget that, that your staff would present you and say, this is 70, 75% of the budget is already set. That is for the, you know, we've got the superannuation, we've got the wages, we've got the basic infrastructures, we've got everything that needs to be paid. And you've got 25, 25% discretionary funding. Right now, everybody sit down and let's go through the wish list. We don't have that anymore. We are flat out, it's 100% being spent on opening the door, turning the lights on, keeping the community engaged. And, and that's where it's becoming so hard. We don't have the money to be able to spend to try and generate an income that's going to take us forward financially.
I would say that we're in a similar but different position. We don't have any sort of aged care. There's a hostel, but that's not run by council anymore. We transitioned from the service a few years ago. Our challenge has been children's services and family daycare. So that model was a community-run model and that started to fail. I would say it was a couple of years before I arrived at Greater Hume. And so council stepped in and took over that service, which has proved to be a major challenge for us. Not dissimilar from all of our, all of our neighbours that are in this space. Staffing is a real issue, attracting skilled staff is, is an issue. And also just the regulatory frameworks and the different type of business models to adapt to rather than others, the other services we normally provide, has been very resource hungry for us. It is improving, we've got some great staff in there now. But it really is a classic example of where we stepped in as the community model failed. Really not probably completely understanding what we were taking on, but doing it for the best reasons of trying to provide the service to our community. And it, it is a crucial service. That's probably the biggest one that we, that really is, is a bit more of a challenge for us. The rest of them are pretty standard things that we provide. And the ongoing infrastructure, our challenges will be, we have five outdoor swimming pools, 14, 14 to 15 community halls. They are all, not all of them, the outdoor swimming pools, there's two of them will be due for renewal. Probably one, one or two are overdue. Community halls that are really on care and maintenance at the moment. Those are huge infrastructure challenges for us with our community as to how we, we manage the expectation that they will remain and they will all be of a standard. So that's, that's, that's the ongoing future challenge for us, is managing the expectation. As Snowy Valleys is outlawing, where we don't have, we had the luxury the last few years with our ICIP and Stronger Country Communities and other things to actually provide additional discretionary projects for community. That's gone. But how that works in the future, I'm not really certain. We just, we've got one budget and we're good with that. And we try not to look too far into our long-term financial plan. But quite honestly, if the numbers aren't read, then I've probably missed something, is where we are at the moment, to be fair. You know, if they're not looking pretty scary, then I've probably missed an asset or something somewhere that I need to be looking after because that's, that's our view of the world at the moment.
Just to follow up there, Ms Arnold. We've obviously heard that councils throughout this inquiry have a challenge around depreciation. So if we park that issue for a moment, what you just highlighted, every rural council, I think, I think you articulated it well, by the way, that every rural council has that, yep, the depreciation is one issue, but on the other hand, you might have a legacy infrastructure that was built a long time ago, like a swimming pool or a community hall, that you can't even find the cash to upgrade it. And yep, it might be care and maintenance, but it'll get to a point where it'll go beyond care and maintenance and it is knockdown, rebuild or do we refurbish it?
Yep.
And I suppose where I draw both councils in on this question is about, I've been talking about the entire inquiry about equity and how, how do rural councils in particular get their fair share? So a couple of quick questions. Do either council have a dedicated grants officer as part of your team?
We had one, but we've, they've moved on. But we are actually in the market again to have, to recruit one that will certainly spend a, a good percentage of their time looking at grants.
Snowy Valleys?
Well, I suppose we've got a couple of options. We, some of the economic development staff that we have, have the ability to, to, to look for and apply for grants. We've also got a projects officer who's more around a grants coordinator than an actual grant writer because of the, there hasn't been a lot of grants flying in the Snowy Valleys council due to the amalgamation, due to the bushfires, due to COVID. And to be honest, they probably got a little bit out of control, the amount of grant funding that was coming into the Shire. So we've put on a grant coordinator or a project coordinator to help keep an oversight over those projects. So it's more, it's more of a grant oversight role rather than a grant writing role. But they do provide assistance in, in writing grants for different areas. But at the moment, as it is now with, with council, you know, if it's a, if it's a roads, fixing country roads opportunity, although it's probably going to be done by the engineering department, if it's more of an economic development opportunity, it'd be done by the economic development staff.
So a question to both councils. Taking aside any disaster or DRFA funding and parking to one side, grants that you're delivering upon that have been in the pipeline, have you seen a decrease in grants that you've been able to apply for in the past 12 months? And secondly, of the grants that you have applied for in the last 12 months, what sort of success rate are you getting with those?
So I might leap in there first. So absolutely a decrease in the grant opportunities, not only for ourselves but also for our community. We regularly have community groups reach out to us looking for heritage grants and, and other small amounts of money to be able to keep our community assets looking nice and maintained. And that's simply gone. We've gone for two major grants in the last six months and been unsuccessful in both of them.
Yeah, look, it's a similar story here. But look, I, I'd draw you back to the comment I made earlier about the opportunity to, to participate in non-competitive grants. So like your Stronger Country Communities Fund, like your federal government Local Roads and Community Infrastructure Programme, where every council is provided with a share of the pie. Because then, you know, we're not in that, you know, direct competition with other councils as to what is the greatest need at a particular point in time. It's an allocation based on population, based on road lengths, based on a whole host of factors whereby, you know, every council's got some needs and to pit them against one another is pretty tricky. Whereas those non-competitive grants, and both of those, the two that I've mentioned, no longer exist, it was a pity. But they have got the ability for you to do some basic community council services like extending your footpath networks and those types of things, which, you know, in, in larger regional centres you'd take for granted. But in many rural, rural towns, they, they still don't exist. And particularly when it's, you know, a lack of, you know, footpaths to key, you know, to key facilities within towns, like to your, to your public schools, to your swimming pools, to your sports grounds, those types of things, like in many rural communities, those good, you know, footpath linkages still don't exist. And with some of those non-competitive grants, it certainly, you know, provides you an opportunity to do some extra work that you might necessarily have not had the chance.
Well, you, last question before the chair takes the microphone off me. The, you, you almost stole my next question. So to, to, to wind up, my question to you, to both councils is, would you support, no matter who is in government or government benches, a better funding system that was based off size of road network, if it's for road funding, or a model like Stronger Country Communities funding, where the funding was dispersed based on LGA? So you knew what the quantum was, it was about pitching good projects. And I think the point to this is, is that it fits so many different parts of the criteria. One, does it fit the fact that you can use it on infrastructure that you normally wouldn't have the rate base to support building that project? And could be smaller projects. And secondly, the fact that it's, it's equitable funding with no BCR that delivers a central community infrastructure? Would you agree with, with that observation?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. I think, and I, as part of a model of really looking at how local government is funded so that some of the pre-major infrastructures, light roads, are, are better understood as what's needed. So in local government, we tend to ask for what we think we can get rather than what we think we need. And I think that's the difference too, when it comes to something like roads. You'll go in for the $3 million because that's what you think you can get and that's the grant or the, or you're given that. When in actual fact, I know I've got a business case for a road, which is a major regional road, that's a $35 million business case. So I can spend the three and the 10 and I'll be happy to do that. And we have, and happily will, but it's not actually what we need. And I think it's a combination of allowing for that discretion to be able to do those allocations based on equity and then having a real understanding of what's needed across the state and the regions and working out a model on how we can work with the state and federal government to be able to secure those funds long-term to be able to deliver that. Because we, we don't want to be seen as, as not being capable of delivering on the services and therefore having to have some sort of structures and rules put around us to check. Really, we're here to try and do the best we can. Really, we're here to try and do the best we can for our communities. I've got nine councillors and that's why they take those calls at seven o'clock at night about the pothole because they really care about their communities and that's what we're trying to do. And really what we're trying to do as a sector is get enough resources to be able to continue to do that and not have to limp from one disaster and one grant funding thing to another, hoping that it's, that it has to be okay because otherwise, if we're not here, who's going to be?
Can I just add with the roads? Sorry, Trina.
We are over time, so if we can just keep it brief, please do.
It was just with the roads. We've got over 2,000 kilometres of roads. We've got three parts of highways in there as well. But we've got half and half roughly of sealed and unsealed. So if that was the case, that would make it so much better because for our rural people to go about their daily business, you know, getting their products from the farm to whichever service they need to deliver. You know, to have a safe, safe pathway to do their job. And if you understand, well, what's the, yeah, sorry, Trina.
I'm just trying to be really succinct. I think the devil will be in the detail. And I think that to fully understand what that scope of the grants would be and how it would be decided because FAGs grants started off as one thing and evolved and now councils that don't need it still get it. The very quick point I just wanted to make is that as local government, there is such a shortage in good quality staff or staffing that we're now advised to offer aboveward wages to try and attract staff to rural areas. And the fact is that I know that Snowy Valleys council at one point, in a small, relatively small budget, spent in excess of $4 million in six months for consultants. So the fact that we're having to pay that much money for consultants because we can't attract the staff is also a burden that local government is wearing.
Thank you. Thanks so much for making time to give evidence to the inquiry today, to both councils. Any questions on notice or supplementary questions, our committee secretariat will be in touch with you with regards to those details. That concludes the hearing for today. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you for meeting you.